Okay, we've confirmed that we are recording. Welcome everyone. Today is Monday, October 5, 2020. It is approximately 7:00 PM or a couple of minutes thereafter. This is the regularly, one of the regularly scheduled meetings of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board.
Barbara? I'm calling the meeting to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, amended on 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of the notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines of Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial star nine if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and will make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during this meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available via AP-TV. Please join me in the salute of the flag.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible.
Justice for all.
Okay, Barbara, I'll conduct the roll call. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry? He was here.
Are you unmuted, Jim? See that Jim looks like he's muted.
Yeah.
I think he's not. His microphone's muted.
Well, I'll come back to him.
Okay.
Okay, Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax? Alexis Taylor?
All right, they should be, they should be a little...
Eric Alipo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krzak?
Here.
And Jim Henry again?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
All right. All right. The first item on the agenda are the approval of the minutes. We're looking to approve minutes of 9:14, 2020. It was a regular meeting. Can I get, is there anybody that would like to make, is concerned about anything about those minutes? Or shall we go straight to a vote? Any concerns?
Hearing none.
I don't hear any.
I'm moved to approve the minutes for the 9:14 meeting.
Okay, that would be Michael Manzella moving? Okay.
I second them, Jack. Pardon.
Okay. Okay, let's call the roll on that. John Moore, Mayor John Moore.
I'm gonna have to abstain because I never got him.
Okay. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
I abstain.
Thank you. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor is not here, sorry.
Alexis is here.
Oh, Alexis is in? Okay, sorry, I didn't have her. Sorry about that. Okay, Alexis, your vote?
Can't hear you, Alexis. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Eric Kalipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzak?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are approved.
Okay, the next side, next minutes for approval is from September 21st, 2020. It was a regular meeting. Can I get, anybody have any concerns or can I get a motion to for approval? All right, motion to?
Move approved.
Who's that? Jim Henry?
Yes.
Second, Michael Manzella.
On page two of this, of the minutes, in the middle of the page, you see, and next to my name, there's a blank. The question I asked of the architect was, what was the distance between the points on the diagram that he showed? With that change, I'd, I'd like to add that into the minutes.
Okay, we'll get those added.
Okay, Mr. Manzella, you still second it with that amendment?
Yes, let's do.
Okay. Uh, let's take the roll call. John Moore?
Again, my apologies. I didn't get them. I abstained.
Okay. Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Jim? Hello, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yeah.
Eric Alipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzak?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Minutes approved.
Okay, the next item up for discussion is the 2021 Annual Planning Board Meeting Schedule. Does anybody have any concerns about the dates that we put all forward? Anyone?
Not me. I'm good.
No.
No, everybody's good?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the 2021 meeting dates for the planning board?
Yvonne Clayton moved, moved to approve the dates for the 2021 meetings.
Jim Henry, second.
Before we vote, one quick clarification. April 5th, 2021 is what should be listed, not 2019.
Right, typo.
Got it.
Amendmented.
That's when we invented the time machine.
Okay, let's, uh, let's call a roll. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Sorry, I think that we didn't hear that, Jack.
I didn't hear Jim.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yeah.
Eric Alipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes, sir.
And Barbara Krzak?
Yes, indeed.
Our dates.
Those are our dates. Okay, we'll submit them to Sonia as she requested. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Council Referral of the 2020 City of Asbury Park Land Development Regulations and Zoning Amendments. We need to let, to unmute Michelle Alonso, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
But I'm still, I'm not in as a panelist. I need to be let in as a panelist.
Andy, is that something you can help us out with?
You should, good.
There you are. Now you just have to unmute yourself, Michelle.
Okay. I'm gonna start my share screen. Oh, actually, Jack?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get you sworn in. And I'm also gonna have Michael Sullivan and Donna Miller sworn in. Are there any other board or city staffers in attendance that need to be sworn? No?
No.
Okay, all of you will please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony of all of you are about to give in this? Truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
And each one of you, starting with Michelle, could you identify yourselves for the record? Spell your names and give us your affiliation with the city and/or the board.
I'm Michelle Alonso. M.I.C.H.E.L.E., last name A.L.O.N.S.O. I'm the Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I'm also a licensed professional planner.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Catton Hints, S, I gotta spell my name, S.U.L.L.I.V.A.N. Were the City Planning Board Consultants. And I am also a licensed planner in the state and a certified planner by AICP.
Thank you, Mike. Donna?
Donna Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R., also Clark Catton Hints. We are the Board's Planner. And I am also a certified and licensed professional planner.
Okay. Okay, Michelle.
Just, just before we, just before we begin, Jack, I just wanted to break it down for the, for the planning board and for the public on how we're looking to be able to go through this. I had sent a note to everyone about that we're breaking it down into like three different sections. And as, as Michelle goes through them, you'll see which ones we're going to, to bundle together. And after the first, like, let's say, the part one is gonna be fences, lighting, landscaping and signs. Once we finish with that, then the public will be able to, the planning board can ask questions, the public can ask questions, and then the public will comment, and then we vote. Then we move to the next section and then the following section. So that, so these are bites that we can understand and also they're, they're within reasonable size for, because this is a large presentation. So, go ahead, Michelle.
I need, I need AP-TV.
Barbara, Jim Henry?
Should we hold our questions to the end of each section or how do you want us to? How do you want us to handle that?
Um, I think that, what do you think? I'm fine with the, the planning board going with each one. Like, let's say, once you finish fences, you ask your question about fences, but I would prefer the public to go with after we finish the bundle. If that's okay.
Fair enough.
Right. Okay.
Okay, Michelle.
You guys can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I just need to make a mild adjustment. Trying to get it so I could see the full screen. Um, okay. So, good evening, board members, members of the public, board professionals. This has been a little bit of a long journey. These are the proposed zoning amendments that came out of our master plan process in 2007, the recommendations. We have been working with our planning consultants, Clark Catton Hints, basically since then. But I'd say the, the zoning amendment Subcommittee has really been working on the technical details of these amendments for, I would say, a year and a half now. So, we're very proud to present to members of the public and the board these zoning amendments, which is the most comprehensive revision of the zoning ordinance in decades. The, the committee was a mixture of members of the planning board, planning, planning board chairwoman, Ms. Krzak, and members Rick Lambert, Jen Sauter, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton, who represent both the board and the municipal council. We also had zoning board chairman Chris Avaloni. And we had myself and the zoning officer Mark Siegel. And of course, Michael Sullivan and Donna Miller. And participate in going over various technical drafts of, of what I'm going to present tonight. This, of course, includes a revision to the zoning map to go along with these revisions. Not many revisions to the map, one boundary change, but mostly relabeling. And as Barbara had said, we originally broke this at least for public hearing purposes into two parts, trying to make them more digestible bites, because this is a comprehensive zoning amendment. So, it, I'm gonna present it in two parts tonight, and again, depending on time.
Pardon the interruption. I'm gonna do this in tripart fashion?
Uh...
What Barbara mentioned.
Well, let me, we can't, yes, but let me explain. We prepared it in two parts.
Okay.
And there's a distinction between the two, because the first are some, are general design standards. They include the fencing, the lighting, and also includes signage that applies to all districts.
Okay, are we going to track the presentation with the three resolutions? Or, or you're gonna do it some other, just do it, not do it that way?
No, you know, basically, that's how I'm doing it. I, when I did, it is gonna go in the order of, of the two, well, when I say two, the third is the zoning map.
Okay.
There's three resolutions. One, that was the basically design standards. The second, which, let me go slide two, makes sense. This is how it was broken out. Fences, lighting, landscaping, signs. That's my part one. And then part two, which we, again, because this is, this is a lot of stuff. This part two, when it goes into the zone districts, changing uses, bulk requirements, conditional uses. And then the third part, which is also design standards, go hand in hand more with the zone districts than the general zoning or parking design standards and community design standards.
Okay. Okay, so as you go into these, please identify the resolution, the resolution should be made part of the record, the referral resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's make sure that we include that, those three resolutions within the exhibits this evening.
Well, I kindly asked, would you want to refer to by resolution number?
Yeah, sure.
But can I?
Or whatever, whatever's easiest for you. I just wanna make sure that the three resolutions referring this entire body of law over to us are in the record, that's all. That just, just to make exhibits into the record, so that anybody reading the record would find out what we were tasked.
Right.
Mayor Council.
I will ask though, if one, because I do not have the resolutions in front of me on paper, if someone, maybe Mr. Manzella, can just read me those resolution numbers?
I can give them to you.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
Okay, first one, Resolution Number 20, 2020 dash 237. Second one is 2020 dash 238. And the third one is 2020 dash 239.
Right, with 237 being for fences, lighting, landscaping, signs?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and 239 is the maps. Okay.
Got it, thanks.
No, thank you. So, I'm starting tonight, or starting to talk about fences, cuz I thought fences was an easy one to talk about. So, this is referencing Resolution 2020 dash 237, and we're...
Let's call that B. Do you already have things numbered in sequence, B1 through whatever?
As exhibits for these, no. So, I will take...
May I interrupt briefly? Michelle, if you click Start Slideshow, it will become much larger for us.
Oh, that's what I wasn't sure about. Um, I...
It's right to the, right above zoning amendments.
Starts, oh, yeah, okay.
Should.
And it started over, okay. Okay.
All right, so since, since the letter B has been used throughout the other exhibits I had seen earlier, why don't we make this C for city, so that we don't have to go crazy trying to find a number? Let's make Resolution 2020 dash 237 city or C1.
But Jack, is that reference to, that's reference to the text, not the PowerPoint, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I didn't see it anywhere. I didn't see these three resolutions anywhere in anything that I had seen, and they should be part of the record. So, rather than struggle to find out what, what number we could use when we're using the letter B, let's just make it C.
Okay.
C1, 2, and 3, and we'll know exactly what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, thank you. So, the, the biggest change to the fence ordinance is now, um, when you...
Hey, hey, it's, Michelle, I'm sorry, it's John Moore. I'm sorry to cut you off. And I think Barbara explained it to me, but I don't know if, I think everybody else probably, or the board figured it out, but, uh, like, I got like seven different packages stapled together. And so, if, each time we go onto, like, this is fences, so the cover page is listed, the draft design standards update for Asbury Park. And so, if, every time you go to that, could you say like what package it is? And then go to page six where it says 30.63 fences? I think that could help any public listening. It would definitely help me follow.
Okay, just bear with me one moment. Do you guys see what's on my screen?
We still see the same original view of it.
Do you see the PowerPoint?
We see the PowerPoint. We just don't see it, like we said, Start Slideshow, we don't see that.
But you see the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we see the zoning amendments, fences.
Okay, good, because I just pulled up digitally what the, the ordinance itself to do what John just asked me to do.
If I may provide modest tech support, you probably only shared the one application and not your entire screen.
But that's okay.
Right, it's fine.
I'm just looking for the exact section that John wants me to refer to.
I found it. I found it, Michelle.
Okay.
It's in the Draft Design Standards Update for Asbury Park, page six.
It's, it's section 30 dash 63.2.
It's on page seven, six and seven.
Right, or what I was referring to, going back to my PowerPoint, it's what I have on the screen, is the illustration to show how the fencing ordinance has changed and that properties on corner lots will now be able to have the fence on the non-principal street, basically where the side of the house is, not the front, the fence is able to go closer to the street line. Basically, having the same type of regulation as an interior lot. Because we, of course, the, the zoning board has heard a few of these. We've heard complaints from residents with corner lots that they were losing a lot of backyard, because the fence has to be pushed in all the way with the building edge. So, this amendment lets the fence go all the way up, basically, to the sidewalk edge. The only caveat for this, and the committee went back and forth, is that if you are having a fence in your backyard area all the way up to the sidewalk, it cannot be a solid vinyl. It could be solid, but it has to be a better, the better quality wood fence. And that's for static reasons, but also because vinyl fencing reflects heat. And I, I was one person who had concern about the, the heat effect, having a solid vinyl fence all the way up to the sidewalk edge. The requirements for, the other standard requirements for the front and in general all stay the same, where the, you still in your front yard area have to have an open picket. That can be vinyl. It could be wood. It could be bare quality, but we left it that someone could still get like a basic vinyl picket fence from Home Depot and use that for the front yard area. So, that, there are of course also some smaller cleanup sections in the, the fencing ordinance, especially, there was a reference in, in it to a county document that doesn't exist. So, we scrubbed that language just to say that has to do with sight lines for sight, just that a fence cannot block a sight line of a corner or, or a driveway area. So, that fencing, that's fencing in a nutshell. Does any board member have a question about fencing?
Yeah, I have a couple. Jim Henry, I've got a couple of questions. Number one, do we really need to have six-foot fences? Let me just throw that out to you as a question. The next question I have is, or observation is that you don't define sight triangle. And I think since you use several different paragraphs under fencing, we need to add that to the definition. What is the definition of the sight triangle that we're trying to prevent from being adopted? And my third comment is that I think we ought to add a sentence in here saying that no fences shall be erected in the city right of way.
Right.
It doesn't say that.
I mean...
It doesn't say that any place at all I've seen.
Because that, that was in the original ordinance?
I think it ought to go back in then.
Right. And then if it's missing, that was not the intent at all? It's there. It says, page, it's 30 dash 63.2A. Any fence erected within a public right of way shall be removed by the property owner if its removal is required by the city. But we can enhance, of course, enhance that language to, you know, say it's prohibited, cuz it is.
That would be good.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something that should be very plain and very upfront and very prominent in this zoning amendment.
Okay. But back onto your first question, Jim. Were you, you, you said about six-foot fences?
Yeah, I, I question, do we really need six-foot fences?
I mean, six-foot fences, we, right now, you know, they're only permitted in the, the rear and the interior lot lines. And, you know, many people request to have a six-foot fence. They are prohibited in the front yard area.
I, I understand. I'm just throwing out that question, that's all, Michelle.
Well, of course, we, you know, we kept...
And then the other one, the other question I had was, how about putting in a definition of the sight triangle?
Yes, I have that note. That's, yes, most definitely, considering, yeah, we'll do that. But do you want me to continue to respond about the six-foot, or do you want board members to respond?
I, my, my only comment was, is that something that's really, you could persuade me one way or the other.
Because what I was, what I was saying is, we get a lot, of course, a lot of people do want the higher fence for privacy. You know, although I, you know, I am not personally a fan of it for, for safety reasons. And, you know, I live in a town where you're not permitted that high fence. You know, a lot of people in, in the city do want the, the higher fence. And, you know, even sometimes, some people give us pushback about they want all sides to be six, which I don't think is acceptable. The front is at four feet, because it should be, you know, that, for transparency, for safety, that, that the police can look into a yard if need be. Neighbors have eyes on the yard. But we kept it at the six feet for the side in the rear, because it is quite popular for residents requesting it.
This is, this is Michael Sullivan, just a quick one while we're having this discussion. Sight triangle is defined in the definitions.
All right, thank you for finding that, Michael.
If Jim is done, it's Moore. I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so on page six, it gives some examples of what can be done in one of a fence like I have, stock eight.
Right.
And then if you go to, you go to page eight E, chain link and solid fencing is prohibited. Well, a stock eight fence is a solid fencing, so it can't be, I mean, I'm either breaking the law or not breaking the law, so I, I don't understand how a stock eight fence can be accepted, but it's a solid fence. And then I go two pages later and chain link and solid fences is prohibited for Wall Street faces. Facing fences.
Right, otherwise permitted, thus permitting, this is for Wall Street facing fences unless you're on a corner lot.
I'm, I am on a corner lot.
Right, and so you would be permitted to have the stockade.
But, but I mean, why, again, I'm, I'm missing it. I'm sorry. Okay, forget I'm on a corner lot. I'm on a regular lot. So it says I can have a stockade fence on page six and on page eight it says I can't have a solid fence.
For street facing fences. So that means your front yard fence that in your front yard can't be solid. But then we make the exception, if you're a corner lot, your non-principal side, not your front of your house, your non-principal side can have the solid fence.
Okay, then go down to under thirty sixty-three three vegetation barriers. So I can have a fence at six foot, but I can grow trees to eighty feet and block off my neighbors. Why shouldn't vegetation be kept at the same limit as a fence?
Because truthfully, most people's vegetation in the soils that we have in the city, they, they don't get that high. And it's very hard to, um, regulate plant height. It's very hard to, you know, fences, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. You bought, when you buy it, you buy it in a standard size. You know, if the only type of, of plant, I mean, there's a few plant materials that can get that high and that thick. Um, and they tend to be arborvitae. They tend to, you can get a private after many years to grow that high. But it comes to be a little bit subjective of when it comes to plant material and regulating the height of plant material. But we do have the line in there about this, the, the, um, the sight triangle because that is a little, is more concrete to regulate.
Okay, but it forgets like triangle. My next door neighbor puts in the arbories and he lets them grow to twenty feet. What do I do?
Is it, if it's- But it's, is it on a property line? Because the thing is, if it's not forming a fence, you can have a tall plant. Unless it's forming the, the, the barrier of a fence, or even if it's in more, you know, we can't prohibit someone from having a tree, having a rhododendron that gets big. That's where it gets very subjective.
Okay, I, I know a couple of locations in the city where these plants have been planted and they're well over six to they're well over twelve feet and it looks like a iron curtain.
And they're, they're at like the street line?
They're on the street line, yes. I, I just, again, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the question. And then let me just ask some general questions before we go further. That, you know, so just because it could save us time on all the other questions. And you don't have to answer them now. So one of my general questions is like, looking at this whole proposal tonight, not just about fences. So I, I see like, uh, school has their own properties. Housing Authority and City was knocked out, no big deal. Is the city exempt from anything we're going to be okaying tonight?
Theoretically, yes. By, by, by basically us being our own, yes, I would say yes. Even though of course we, we as the city are supposed to strive to uphold our own zoning. You know, we, we are, we're, we can deviate because we are ourselves, but-
And, and, okay, no, thank you. And I, I appreciate you. And Barbara, I appreciate you giving me a little bit of latitude just because I think it'll save me time and all this time asking these other two questions. Uh, so we're, we're going to be going through fences. We're going to be going through everything. So fences. So we're going through fences right now. Is there any area of the city where this is not going to apply to? Be it the waterfront redevelopment area, be it the Scarter Site. I mean, I don't want to go through all this about fences and then six months from now, oh, that doesn't apply because it's in the WRA. So is this for the entire city or any zones left out of this new plan?
Yes, but it, so every redevelopment plan is written differently because waterfront is its own animal, as we know. Waterfront redevelopment plan is also its own animal. And that's the only plan in the city that says nothing refers back to the zoning ordinance. Now, the other redevelopment plans, CBD, Main Street, Stars, Scared Site, Springfield, Av- Springwood Avenue, Washington Avenue, the First Avenue, one zero zero one First Avenue overlay, they all make references back to the zoning ordinance. If this, if the regulation is not specifically different and called out in that redevelopment plan, then they all have language that say that regulate, you have to follow the regulation in the zoning ordinance. That includes-
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, yep, thank you. And then last question, again, I appreciate it. Uh, so if, whatever, if not tonight, if the next meeting we pass this and goes back to mayor and council and they pass it, is like anything like right now that's like not kosher to this new plan or they grandfathered in forever? Or do they have to like spend thousands to get up to date to this new plan?
No, in New Jersey, New Jersey's a very strong grandfathering state. And we, anything that's there with the, you know, the day before this becomes law, it's, it gets to stay there until it's removed or nature destroys it.
As long as it was put there legally.
Right, true.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate it. So right now, if I have, uh, I don't, but if I had a six-foot fence and it's a stockade fence, and everybody knows after like eight to 10 years, stockade starts to like rot a little bit and it has to be replaced, I can replace it with a six-foot stockade fence, not expanding it, same footprint, same everything.
If you, you're allowed to keep, if it's a non-conforming fence, you're allowed to-
What is?
What?
Well, it's conforming. It's, it's conforming now.
Right.
But with this new, it may not be conforming. So, but it rots in five years. Can I keep my six-foot fence, which I don't have, but it's just, it's a hypothetical question.
Well, clear, the, the, I'm gonna, I'm wanting to use a more general hypothetical because if you have, if someone in general has a non-conforming fence, they're allowed to repair the fence, but when that repair turns into wholesale replacement, they have to conform with the ordinance.
What's wholesale replacement?
Like we've had-
Define.
Define wholesale, more than, more than 50%. So-
Okay, so every, anybody has a fence like this, like, don't wait for eight years for it to rot away, replace two sections at a time.
We've had that. We've had people repair it. But, but the goal of, of something like this, because this is, again, this is tweaking it. This is actually taking a step back now with, with our ordinance. This, what we're proposing tonight is less, I shouldn't say onerous. Basically, we are, our zoning ordinance never permitted a solid fence on a corner lot for both sides. And you had to set it back to the backyard. This is actually being more permissive. That's the, and that's the change tonight. It's actually where, it's becoming more permissive.
And not, not disagreeing with you one iota, but I mean, there's, there's going to be people like three, four years down the road and say, oh damn, I didn't know that. I mean, why didn't somebody tell me? So, I mean, so again, I'm just playing devil's advocate. And again, I, I appreciate you and Barbara giving me the latitude. At this point, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. I was gonna say, we, we, we deal with it every day. We deal with, you know, in the zoning office of all sorts of bizarre things that, that people will either, you know, put up or not fences only, you know, other, other stuff that, that the ordinances didn't talk to and, um, or, you know, in general, people like have done this for years. We deal with that every day. So it's, it's not that big a deal.
Hey, Michelle, this is Mike Manzella. I only have one little question for the fence section, and that is, uh, the same item that the mayor was just talking about, number E, or letter E on page eight. We say chain link and solid fencing is prohibited for all street facing fences excluding alleys unless otherwise permitted by?
Right, if by, by the section above, so we can say that. We can say it, because it's, it's really the, the corner lot section that's permitting it. So-
Oh, okay. I, I thought the intent was like by a specific person or planning board.
Well, if, if that's unclear to you, John, and, and anyone else, we can clarify that so it's clearer.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, let's clarify that.
What page is that?
That is pay, that's letter E on page eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any more commissioner questions on fences? Okay. All right, let's, so I did this a little out of order because I thought fences was the easiest. But go to the beginning of your packet and it's lighting. So lighting, as you all know, we didn't have any lighting standards. Some of the redevelopment plans have a little bit here and there, but wholesale, we, we didn't have any standards. And it was really just, even though it's a requirement in the checklist to have your lighting plan, your foot candles, your detail, um, for you guys to review, there really wasn't a standard. And it's always up to your discretion and reports by Michael Sullivan and Donna Miller as to what's acceptable and not. Well, now that has changed, or that is going to change.
And just one thing, Michelle, before you get going, um, for board members, it's, it's on the, this is in the um, packet that said draft design standards update for Asbury Park. Uh, and it's page one thirty dash fifty-six dash four. It's page one of that document. Um, and we don't see that on the screen yet. Uh, Michelle, if you're doing it, we're not seeing it.
You don't see the, the PowerPoint saying zoning amendments, lighting?
No.
Oh, yeah.
You might, you might want to start, you might want to stop sharing and start again, maybe?
Okay, I think you're right because I see it and it says you are screen sharing.
It might be your second screen.
Do you see it?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, let's do this. Sorry, how about now?
Are we still seeing the fences, corner lots?
Wait. Do you see it now?
No.
I don't know why, because I'm moving the, the stuff and says you are screen sharing.
We don't see the view of the start slideshow. We see the view underneath that.
Is there an option that says screen one or screen two, Michelle, rather than the specific application you're trying to share?
Let me go to advanced. Nope. Good, I'm back at basic.
When you click share screen.
Yeah, I clicked that.
And then do you see something that says screen one or screen two?
No, it just gives me my screens and it gives me actually showing two of this PowerPoint. Did that work?
Thank you.
All right, I don't know why.
Eric, you could be my IT guy any day.
No, I have not. I, I'm not that patient, so I'm not a great IT guy.
All right, so basically the, um, I, I'm going to assume, even though of course members of the public are not as well versed, that everyone on the board is well versed. I'm not going to assume. I'm going to talk about a little bit about illumination. So the, um, the, in the, the design industry, lighting intensity is measured in foot candles. And sometimes it's measured in wattage. For digital, we, our new ordinance hasn't measured in nits. But traditionally ordinances talk about lighting intensity and foot candles. So the, the new amendment for lighting separates the lighting in, as building lighting and parking lot lighting. And that's what you guys generally see. Or you can see, a lot of times, building lighting is, um, meant for pedestrian scale. It's accent lighting. Um, sometimes it's on a timer. And then the, the major lighting issues that we tend to have are parking lot lighting. And when I say issues, whether it's too bright, it's too low, it glares. So, um, the, these lighting regs for both the building and the parking lot look to regulate that. And the good thing with having these regs is also it applies to all properties in the city, not just those that are going before the board. So if someone puts a light up on their building that's a glare light and, you know, is, is too bright, the zoning officer has regulations to, to abide by. Um, so the two major things for building lighting is that they can't exceed point one foot candles at a property line. And what does that mean, you know, in day to day? That means that if your neighbor, if you're, you're very close to your neighbor and your neighbor decides to put in a light and it's very bright and shining in your window, that we have mechanisms to control it. Because point one, point one foot candle is a very reasonable lighting um, measurement of low intensity at the property line so that it won't shine in your windows. Also, lighting fixtures shall be non-glare, full cutoff. But that means, when we talk about glare, um, is that sometimes light, so lighting can be so bright or tilted in a way, when it's tilted out, that it shines light into your eyes. And a good example is, is usually parking lots or driving. Or you're driving on a road and there's a parking lot that's very lit. And your eye, and the light, the way it's tilted, its intensity blinds you to seeing other things on the road. Um, this by saying non-glare, meaning that it can't produce that kind of glare that would blind you. And full cutoff, meaning that it will project light downward, not out. And the, these are, you know, considered standard good, good lighting, the standard lighting standards, meaning good practice lighting standards. So what this let, for building lighting, it lets someone, if they want to have a decorative light, um, but that it can't produce glare. Parking lot lighting also has to be non-glare and full cutoff, but we also have other, a few other regs to control the intensity. Like the lighting fixture itself can't be more than fourteen feet high. And that ensures that the lighting spill, again, is, is not too intense, not too bright, and is even. And then we have illumination levels for parking lots that control the overall, um, lighting brightness of the area. It's, it's trying to cover. And many times it's, it's done in averages, it's done in ratios. And we're proposing that the minimal be point five foot candles. That's the minimal you can have, but that the maximum be one. And that the minimum illumination be no more than a ratio of ten to one. And that the average is no more than a four to one. And that sounds very, very technical, and it is. It is very technical. I don't expect everyone on the board to be able, or the public to fully wrap their heads around it. But these are, these are standards that, um, Mark Siegel, the zoning officer, understands, I understand, and your board planners understand. And this is the, basically how the industry regulates lighting. And that these are standards that, again, are, are very good and would both, you know, ensure that areas are well lit, but that the lighting is not what is considered nuisance lighting. And there are, we do, um, have other common sense standards in the regulations as well, but this is really the, the meat of the lighting regulations. So with that very brief- So with that very brief presentation on lighting, does anyone have any questions about the lighting standards? Yes, Mike?
Michelle, oh, sorry. Sorry. I can wait. It's Jen Souter.
No, Jen, I'm sure Mike will let you go first.
Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, thank you, Mike. So it's Jen Souter. Just a quick question, because I don't remember. I may have asked this before in the committee, but the, why we didn't include that needs to be dark sky certified or equivalent?
Well, I think, you know, I, I think it's because we were trying to do something that both talked to site plan applications and also talked to just someone looking to put a light on their house or their small business. But saying that, if other people, you know, other members of the board and Donna and Michael want to consider it, I'm open to that.
Yeah, so this is Mike. My, I had a couple suggestions, recommendations that are in line with what the Dark Sky Association kind of recommends. So if I can, real quick, there's just three that, well, my first recommendation, actually, on page one under A2, there appears to be an extra S after the word illumination.
Okay.
That's one. The second was number four. I would propose that we add the words and fully shielded at the end. Because just because a light fixture is full cutoff, doesn't mean that it's fully shielded. If it's a more of a decorative type light, it may not have the shielding on the sides, even though it's technically cut off. That's number two. And then the third was that maybe it's a new bullet there that the correlated color temperature must be less than 3,000 Kelvin.
I need you to repeat that.
So the lighting.
Last one I didn't hear.
Okay, the lighting fixture correlated color temperature, that'll be less than 3,000 Kelvin.
Yeah, and the reason that's important, I don't want to jump, I don't want to see your thunder, Michael, is because that, that gets into the warmer range, which where you get LEDs, which are much more in the old warm incandescent range. And that's a much more desirable temperature, color temperature. So I think that's, that's a good standard to put in there. If that's, if that's the direction the board wants to go. But in terms of the shielding, when we say fully shielded, what you're meaning is that the source of light is not visible, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, because there was some literature that I read that full cutoff basically means that, you know, you have very low levels of light between 80 and 90 degrees from the light source, right? So it's essentially, it's essentially sealed on the sides, but you may have like a more decorative light that is actually kind of bright in that 80 and 90 degree range. And if it's not fully shielded, it may emit some of that kind of outward facing light.
Yeah, so where, the only place we're going to run into issues is if you have a higher building mounted light where you, where you can't help but see the source of it if you walk under it, right? So we need to, we need to finesse that. And the language is a little softer than what you suggested because we understand what we're trying to get. But I understand what you're saying about the full cutoff is it's not necessarily shielding the source. That's what the anti glare statement was for. So we can strengthen that.
Yeah.
We can, we can strengthen that. It's not a problem.
And the only other thing I wanted to bring up, I don't know if this is a standard kind of practice, but I know that low pressure sodium fixtures are kind of on their way out. And I don't know if that's something we want to say that we prohibit just from an environment, no?
Well, I think, you know, so, and I think you mean high pressure sodium.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. You're on it. But, but, you know, I think that at some level, like you don't know what the next technology is going to, now we're in LEDs. I mean, so I don't think anybody's using high pressure sodium. I mean, I haven't seen anybody install a high pressure sodium. Maybe they're doing it down there in places that I haven't seen. But I don't know that anybody's doing it because from a, from a standpoint of a developer, there's the cost premium for LEDs has come down so much, but the energy savings is so much better. And the ability to control the lights and how they, and potential glare or spillage is so much higher that developers are doing it on their own. So I think if somebody comes in from a, for development application, we would say, don't use these. You're going to use something. I mean, we would catch it, so.
Okay, great.
And so can I, can I ask before, before we finish everything, that I know that you mentioned that we want to strengthen that, that statement, number four. But before we go to a vote, I think we need to know what that, what that statement will be, is my guess. As well as if we're adding the correlated color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin.
I think that's a good idea.
So we know what we're voting on.
And that, this is Jen Souter again. I was going to ask, the, with the dark sky approved fixtures. I mean, I know they have a model lighting ordinance that has varying language in there. And I'm not sure, I know the blue light is a concern. And so even with like a full cutoff, you can still, would that be addressed by that, adding that 3,000 Kelvin statement in? And the reason I had asked about dark sky generally is because I'm wondering if, in some ways, because it covers, I think it covers all the areas that are of concern, that if you put something in about that, it's almost like simpler, it's simpler resource for people, kind of like having Energy Star certified appliance. Like, okay, I don't, I don't have to research all this. I just know this is acceptable.
I don't, I don't think, this is Michael Sullivan. I don't think there's any harm in saying, you know, lighting fixtures shall be non glare, full cutoff, fully shielded in terms of the source. We're capturing, like you said, we're capturing it with the temperature and the shielding. But I think in gen, in the general section, would, if we said, you know, the preferences for dark sky compliant lighting or something like that, would that be helpful?
I think so. I mean, I think that would do, that would address, you know, what I'm trying to get at, yes.
But we would put that in the general in section X.
Yes.
Should that be a shall, a shall be dark sky? As opposed to could be?
Well, no, I think that, I think the problem, the problem you run into is that there may be fixtures which actually do what you're saying that aren't certified dark sky compliant.
Yeah, and then it adds another step in the whole approval process.
And then we're referring to some, some standard that's not a zoning standard.
Okay.
So I would say the preference would be for dark sky compliant. And that's, that's really a signal to a developer to say, wow, if I use a dark sky compliant fixture, I'm going to hit all the points, right? It's kind of gives them that, but it's not a mandate because you can get there without having that mandate.
Can I just ask a question about number three? The exterior lighting says it must be, it shall be supplied with electricity from underground cabling. What about solar powered lights?
Well, yeah, well, that's, I think that's, that's a good point. It makes an assumption that there will be some sort of cabling. That's good. It really, really meant to ensure that there wasn't, you know, wires going across the parking lot. So to the extent that somebody uses a solar light that doesn't have power coming from a cable, it can be said to the extent that a cable is used to convey power to a light, it shall be underground.
Okay, all right.
I have, excuse me for interrupting. I'm, I do not have, Yvonne just referred to item number three. And what I'm viewing doesn't show an item number three. I'm going to do a resolution with recommendations based on such and such section. I can't do it because I don't know where these, I'm lost.
Okay, it's A3.
I'm looking at thirty dash fifty six dot four, exterior lighting, page one.
Is that, is that what's, what Michelle is showing us?
Michelle's showing us a summary. That's not the.
That's what I have in front of me, and I don't have the other document.
Okay, yeah, we're, I'm looking at the draft design standards update. And, and it's item number thirty dash fifty six dot four, exterior lighting. And it's page one. And it's A3.
Where do I go to find that document?
Do you, did you download everything Irene sent?
I imagine, yeah, I did. I only received three resolutions.
That's where it is.
Yeah, but my resolutions don't have anything attached.
Okay, I'm going to email you.
Yeah, it says see attached. Mine doesn't have anything attached.
Okay.
And I'm just saying this because if I have to do a resolution and list a bunch of recommendations back to the mayor and council, I'm, I'm lost.
Right, right, Jack. I was going to say, Ken, I'm trying to get to my mail screen. And sending this to you, Jack.
Okay.
There are like, Jack, there are like six packets contained in there, six individual sets of documents.
Okay.
And those are the ones that we refer to saying, oh, it's in, you know, design standards, page one or page six or whatever. That's what we're referring to.
But I just sent Jack just the design standards and the sign in one email just now. So at least that, you know, he can just click on those two right in front of him right now.
I'm trying to figure out how to reduce this and get to my email.
Eric?
It's up top in the view options. Here the green bar.
It depends on where you save that information.
Are you able to get to your email, Jack?
No.
Oh, if you hit escape, Jack.
Okay.
It might minimize your Zoom window to show you your desktop behind it.
No.
What if you hover at the top left hand, I'm sorry, I have to switch to a Windows computer.
You know what, Jack? Hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete at the same time.
That sounds dangerous.
That's, I think, you don't want him to, you don't want him to crash Zoom. In the upper right hand corner of your Zoom window, are there three buttons, one that's a dash?
I might have screwed this up. I might, I might have hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete.
No, we see you. We still see you.
Hit escape now.
Yeah, hit escape.
Okay.
Okay, in the top right hand part of your screen, in your Zoom window, do you see your Zoom window now?
No.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at what is projected from Michelle.
Zoning amendments, lighting.
I see four, five, yes, lighting. And then I see recording, you're viewing Michelle Alonso's screen, and it gives me view options.
Yep, in the upper right hand corner of that window, do you see a dash, a double square and an X?
Yes.
Hit the dash.
Hit the minimize there, okay.
Okay, so that's your Zoom window and everything else is behind that.
It's not, I'm hitting it on the dash and it's not reducing.
Jack, click the view options then.
Okay.
Exit fullscreen.
Done. Okay.
Can you get to your email?
Try.
Oh goodness.
Eric, thank you.
Hey, hey.
It might be that, Mike.
No, thank everyone. Thank you.
More, I have a question. Not about, not about the lights yet, about how we're proceeding. And I'm not faulting anybody. I think, Michelle, what you put up is like kind of something like a cheat sheet or summary you sent. I think just the board members, but I don't think the public got that either. So why not just put up what was on our website and what all the members got instead of going to the cheat sheet? From here on out.
Okay.
Because I, I talked to somebody today, I said, well, just go to this. And they were like, that's not on your website, John. I'm like, well, then, so if this wasn't on our website and public is listening, I don't know if anybody is. I haven't gone down below to see who's listening. Like, why put up stuff that wasn't on our website when the other stuff was on our website and that's what they read? And that's what Jack read and that's what we all have in front of us.
Okay, but I'm gonna, I'll do that if, but I'm still going to do my script with my, with the, my cheat sheet, but I'll put the full, yeah.
No problem, it was just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I do.
Now, let me go to new share. Make sure I click on the right thing. I mean, I'm going to go to stop share because that's easier for me to do that, to find my document. And then share it. Share screen. Come on.
There you go.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make it bigger. Without you seeing my email, okay.
But, um, there's a fullscreen button down to the right, bottom right.
I've got, I've been able to get my email and download the lighting, the draft design standards update for Asbury Park lighting standards. So I can now reference what you were talking about. I can see it.
Okay, great, but I'm looking, Mike, for my fullscreen button.
Hoverd over it.
I did. Here, right, meeting controls.
No, in the, in the email there.
In the email?
The four, oh, it's the four corner box.
Oh, you know why? It's blocked by everyone's head. Wait. No, I can't, I gotta.
There it is. There it is. I see it. Where the plus and minus, it's above the plus and minus. Go down. Oh, no.
There it is.
There.
There it is.
Page. No, that was worse, okay.
Well, there you go.
All right, I want to now go to, while I'm fiddling with this, any more questions about lighting?
More, I have a couple.
Okay.
And the first one's not relevant to this one because it's not mentioned. But on another page, it talks about lighting. And we talk about nits, luminaires, the third one, I forget now. When we get to it, I'll remember. And I'm just curious why we use three different definitions as far as lighting. So that's just something for down, down the road. So on this one, under A, the last two words, photovoltaic luminaires. So somebody explained to me what they are and how they apply to this paragraph.
Well, first I was going to say, nits we use for digital lighting. That's the standard for digital. But I'm going to, and foot candles is for lights you put on your house. But Michael, I'll let you explain luminaires.
No, no, just explain to me just the last two words in A and what it has to do with this paragraph. Okay, so the following shall apply to exterior lighting except for solar lighting. Solar powered lighting. Why can't we just say that? It's, it's a term, it's an industry term. We could make it, we could make, we could change it.
Or we can put in parentheses, solar.
Okay, thank you. Number six, and maybe I'm reading this wrong. Except for security lighting, all lighting for non residential uses shall be turned on no earlier than one hour and turned off no later than one hour after established public business hours. And I'm going to use an example here, and I'm not picking on anybody. And I could be totally wrong. If you say no more, you're missing the point. But, uh, okay, I'm just going to say, and with the COVID, I haven't been out lately. But the beer garden has this big sign on the side of their building with gooseneck lights up above it staying to beer garden. So now you tell me they close at two and at three o'clock they have to turn those lights off and they can't light up their sign for advertisement? That's, that's what the ordinance says. That's what the draft says, yep. Well, why would we do that to every business in Asbury Park? So we're going to have a dark city? I mean, somebody tell me the logic unless we're trying to beat the suburbs. But I think Asbury Park is. I mean, somebody tell me the logic unless we're trying to beat the suburbs, but I think Asbury Park is still a city, and we're not trying to become Deal, Lock Arbor, Allenhurst. Why would we not let somebody, like, that has this big beautiful, and I'm just using them, I'm sure there's a hundred others I could use, this big beautiful sign on the side of their building, and hey, at three o'clock, you gotta turn it off. So anybody driving by from three to, they don't open till ten in the morning, well, it gets light at seven, you know, they don't, nobody can look at their sign because we're making everybody like, like, we're back to World War II, we're saying, go dark city?
Well, Mayor, that's, that's, that's pure, that's purely a policy decision. I mean, this can be written to, to accommodate any policy you would like to, uh, foster.
I know it's a policy decision, but somebody had to, like, somebody had to put that in there for a reason, and so, so I would like to know the reasoning.
I think part of the reasoning was that we've heard for a while complaints about, about the, you know, lighting in the city not being regulated, some of it too bright, and I think, you know, and this is, is in other places as well, not just, um, suburban areas, some cities who feel they have lighting issues have, have this as well, and, you know, as a committee, we, we decided to go for it. Now, but I was gonna say, now, we can change that.
Yeah, this, this could be changed, but the, the other, the other concern, I'm just trying to reflect back, Mayor, it's been a while since we, we met on this in terms of the zoning committee, but there was a concern about, uh, some of the districts that have both residential, uh, dwellings as well as, um, the non-residential dwellings. So there was, it was looking at how do you mitigate potential impacts to people who actually live in the, in the district, not just folks driving by. So just, you asked about the basis for it, and that's, that's where some of that came from, so you have that background.
You know, are there any other thoughts from the board members about that, just to modify it?
Well, again, it's like, again, I'm sorry, it's Moore again. It's just like, again, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm using the Beer Garden, but it's the only one I can think of right now off the top of my, I mean, they go before planning board, they go before everything, they're told, yes, you can put in these lights, and yes, it cannot spill, it cannot do this, and they, they proceed to do everything right. Now they're told, hey, you did everything right, and now, and guess what? Come three o'clock, turn off your lights, and, you know, nobody can see your building. So why have decent architecture, decent signs in Asbury Park, yet we're turning the lights off? It's just, again, just my, my opinion, it just makes no sense to me whatsoever. I apologize. I mean, if there was, if they went before planning board and there was spills, they would have been turned down to their gooseneck lights onto their signage.
Yeah, I agree, and I, and I think in the situation of the Beer Garden, right, I mean, that probably would be considered security lighting, so any, anything lighting the paths around the building, I would think would be exempt anyway, but I, I agree, I think it's probably something we can consider removing.
Right, it's, it's, I think that, that it's hard to, to, to do, draw the right balance of places that are lit beautifully versus others that are not, and how do you write something that people have to adhere to? I think that's a struggle for us.
Right.
Especially in a situation like this.
Because the other part, just, Sean, to remind you, is that this also is gonna regulate lighting that doesn't go to any board.
I agree, and it goes back to one of my original, like, three or four questions. Is somebody who's already doing it grandfathered in? So would like, say, this would happen, and again, I'm, I'm not picking on the Beer Garden, use them for example, so they could continue leaving their lights on all night? Or no? They're not grandfathered in.
I think if you've got condition five in there, that you don't need condition six, because the reality too is you're not, I don't think the city would have the capability to technically enforce number six. So it doesn't really make sense to, uh, put a condition.
Well, I mean, I, I kinda tend to, I kinda agree with John that, that, you know, can you imagine going down some of these streets where we have some amazing buildings and say that, you know, there is some signage, let's say, you know, like, Asbury Lanes, or, you know, some of the, some of the buildings that are down Lake Avenue like we talked about. What if we force them to go dark? I think that that would be a shame.
Yeah, I agree.
Right. But, no, but how do you regulate it if there's residential versus non-residential? It gets, I think it gets really hard. Define that.
No question about it, but this one specifically says non-residential.
Right, I, I meant, I'm sorry, John, I meant, non, I mean, I meant residential as in that, that, that people live around it as opposed to the building itself. That there are residents that can see it. Um, I don't know, I, I, I tend to agree with John on this one. I mean, anybody else have any other opinions on this?
I mean, I guess my question is, to what extent do we need to nail this down today, right? You know, it seems like for things that we don't have an easy answer for our hardworking, experienced professionals might need to go back and sort of reconsider pieces of it. But, you know, coming up with an answer right now may not be the easiest.
Well, well, Eric, let me, let me, let me say this. Let, let me just, uh, kind of get into this a little bit. Um, so the point is, i- if, if there's no desire to really turn off the lights after business, that there should be some level of illumination, and I tend to agree with what the mayor's saying in terms of, uh, making the place feel lived in even when it's, the businesses aren't bustling, right? So you feel safe walking down the street because there's ambient light from these things, and some of the buildings are, are worthy of lighting, and some of the new designs that are coming in are really doing that. I think that at some point, at some level, this will be self, this could be self-regulating in terms of the, uh, owners not wanting to light up their place brightly all night, but will have a diminished level of lighting that might just wash the walls or something like that, right? So I, I think if I were gonna suggest something, I would suggest that if there's consensus on the board, that this, this section six be pulled out for now, and you can always revisit, if there becomes a problem, which apparently, no, there's no problem right now. So if it does become a problem, you can revisit that. That would be my suggestion, that it would be pulled out now, and you revisit it if it becomes a problem.
I guess my question was more about how to deal with this and other issues we come up with tonight. In the course of this, how do we, you know, it seems like we're being asked to approve something that just might need more work, and I also agree with the mayor in this case that, that I do not think they should be turned off. Do I think they should be diminished? Sure. Do I also think it's the biggest sticking point? No.
Well, what I would, what I would suggest is, and, you know, it's up to the board for discussion, is that if we come up with points that we can't resolve, then I get it, then, then we have to go back. But at this point, from what we've gone through, I have not seen anything unless somebody else has.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
That we can't get through.
No, I, I, I'm just getting to the point that, you know, this is one, I, I was wondering about this anyway, is like, are we expected to just wholesale approve all of these? Or, I'm sorry, to vote, you know, vote as, as your conscience says, but.
Right, you vote as your conscience says. We're going through everything, and I think that if there is anything here that anybody, that, I mean, that we really have to seriously go back to, that our professionals would, you know, go back and then kind of figure something else out because we're so far apart, then yeah, I think that we, that they should, but I don't think that we've hit that yet in my.
Not at all.
Yeah. No, this is, this is not a, nothing's a done deal here.
Okay.
Nothing's a done deal. You know, we, we vote our conscience once we get to that point, if we get to that point. But we will, let's see.
Do you want, we'll, we'll just strike six.
Right. At this point, we strike six. Um, and we've added the, you know, the, a number eight for the 3,000 Kelvin. We've added, uh, on general, A general, preferences dark sky compliance. And, uh, I think on number four, um, Michael, you had, you were, we were strengthening number four?
Yeah, the, uh, the idea would be we would add, uh, end fully shielded.
End fully shielded. Full cutoff and fully shielded.
And we're, we're gonna add the preferences for dark sky compliance fixture.
Right, to A in general.
Right. And we're also gonna clarify in, uh, that photovolta, photovoltaic is solar.
Yes. That's on number three, right?
And number three was modified.
Yeah.
Right.
That's it. Anything else for, uh, lighting? Okay. Um, next is landscaping, and for those following, following along.
Uh, Barbara, before.
Go ahead.
Before we leave that lighting.
Yes.
Trying to get in here. Uh, and A1, on page one.
Yes.
Uh, should we set standards? It says, uh, the architect should be consistent, but should we set standards, uh, in this paragraph?
So, so here's my, here's my suggestion, Jim, this is Michael Sullivan. Uh, because, because, I don't know what you're talking about with respect to standards, this is really, you know, guidance in terms of how this should work. Um, in terms of, every building's got its own design, and so the fixture types and, and the themes that someone may come up with will really reflect that. We're trying to coordinate this with the building to make sure it's tied together.
Is that, is that the intent of, uh, paragraph one?
Yes.
That, uh, each building would be coordinated within itself?
Yes, and, and, and also in terms of its site, to the extent it has site.
Okay, fair enough. My other, next comment is in paragraph B2, same page. It says that the, uh, lighting fixtures, this is, they're talking about the parking lot, lighting fixtures may be attached to a building. Should that same comment be, uh, also listed under, uh, paragraph A?
Fully shielded.
Okay, uh, four will, paragraph, uh, A4 will take care of that issue?
It, it, it should, but it's, 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 it's repeated.
Okay, and my next one is a question about, uh, next page, where they talk about illumination levels. Top paragraph. Explain that, this paragraph three, explain that. It looks to me as if, uh, you can have some real hotspots in your parking lot, with ten-foot candles.
So, no, I think, I, I just wanna make sure you're understanding the paragraph. So, um, this is Michael Sullivan.
Yeah.
The, um, the minimum level is, is a half a foot candle for safety reasons. So that's the lowest you're allowed to go. The average is not to exceed, or should be a one-foot candle, but when we talk about ten to one, we're not talking about ten to one in terms of the, um, it's ten-foot candles, that's the relationship of the, uh, the maximum to the minimum. So, um, if the minimum was, you know, half a foot candle, it might be a little less than that, then you're, then you're at, you know, fi- five-foot candles. But that's a standard, that's, that's, that's an industry standard that means that you're not gonna have too bad of a hotspot, and then when you have the minimum or the, the maximum to average of four to one, that's, that's really, uh, more important. And you get, and that's a pretty, that's a very uniform, uh, four to one is a very uniform standard.
Okay, I, I just, um, the ratios seem to be high, and that's, thanks, Mike, I appreciate the, uh.
These are within the, uh, Illumination Engineering Society guidelines, so.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any, any questions about, um, lighting? Before we continue on? Okay. So, uh, now, we're, we're going into landscape, and this is page two, as you can see on your screen. Uh, it's page two of draft design standards update for Asbury Park. That's the package.
Right. All right, so as you can see, there's already a section about landscaping, and we just tightened this up a little bit, um, with a few regs that, um, we, we put a statement, we put a regulation that street tree shall be the predominant species found in the media area. And that we now have a whole section on street tree locations. Can't be, you know, it has to be certain distance from a curb cut, fire hydrants, trap, traffic signs. And then we now have a section about the proper way to plant the street tree. That includes soil drainage requirements, and, and that tree pits are now based on sidewalk size, so it's not a one-size-fits-all. We actually, um, we have regulations how the trees should be planned. We also have, um, I said, it's soil and drainage requirements, um, type of soil that should be used, how it should be drained. And then we have a tree minimum size requirement, 2.5 to 3-inch caliper trees. And again, this is, um, a way that the industry measures trees. Um, caliper is the size of the trunk, and it determines, you know, how big, yeah, it determines how big the tree is, um. For street trees that go between the curb and the sidewalk, or go in a pit, you want them to be pretty mature, so when, they don't get broken either by humans or by nature, but not too big that the root ball actually doesn't fit into the planting area.
It's, it's also, it's also important that there's a balance between the size of the tree, uh, and its ability within vandalism or damage, structural damage, but also its ability to survive. The larger the tree, the harder it is to get it to be transplanted and live. So there's a, a fine, a balance there.
Right, very, yes, that, well spoken, Michael. And that's really i- in a nutshell, on trees, um, again, we did a little bit of change. We didn't go, you know, um, I shouldn't say we didn't go whole hog. I feel that these changes are, are sufficient. Um, concerned, we don't have that much deep, like, issues with, uh, with landscape plans and street plant, and street planting, but this again solidifies it with modern standards, reasonable standards, and again, standards that help the trees live. Does anyone have any questions about this section?
Yes, I have a couple of questions and comments. Uh, Michelle, can we go back to page two? And start off with, uh, paragraph A?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, second line paragraph A where it says, uh, uh, where the, the approval of the zoning officer, uh, removal of the trees, et cetera. By statute, that belongs to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. Uh, that is the body that's, uh, entrusted by statute, state statute, uh, with the, uh, street trees and other, uh, trees, uh, belonging to the city. So I think you ought to change that zoning officer to the Environmental Commission.
Actually, we, we put that in that way, Jim, because right now there is no procedure for someone to apply to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission for a tree removal, and this is more in.
This, this is. This, this is, this is in conflict with the state statute enabling the formation of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. Okay.
Wait, 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 hold on. Well, is this true? Michael or Michelle, are we aware of what Jim is talking about?
No. And so I would have, I have to look into a little bit more.
All right. So that's something that, say that again, Jim, that, that, that the environmental shade, this goes against what? The environmental shade tree creation? Say that again?
This, this statute enabling the formation of Environmental Shade Tree Commission gives that body the jurisdiction of street trees and other trees within the cities. And so it should be, instead of the zoning officer with that approval, it should be the environmental commission.
Is that only for removal, Jim? Or for what?
That's for everything dealing with the planting of trees, the removal of trees, the maintenance, pruning, the whole bit. All right, we've got to look at that law.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that, that the Environmental Shade Tree Commission truly has that responsibility, because there is no way for them, there's not, just let me finish.
Sure.
Because there's no way for them to, nobody submits anything to them to say, I want to plant a tree, or I want to take out a tree, as far as I know.
Right, because we don't have an ordinance that specifically talks to that.
Right. So, so I think that we have to kind of, though I understand what you're saying, Jim, I think that we're going to have to kind of look at this to see, to make a, a bigger decision in the city about this. Is this really true? Because I'm, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking that we have anything that's on the books that says it is. But I respect what you say, Jim.
Check, check it out. Maybe it's my interpretation that may, you know, check it out. Anyway, I just want to find out the difference, the conflict.
But where are you looking?
State statute. The state statute that provides that, for the formation of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission.
Okay. So that's something, to Eric's point earlier, is that this is something that we really have to look into, because I don't think that we can proceed on this piece without that. Now, what, which, you have anything else there, Jim?
I'm sorry, Barbara. You're breaking up on me.
I'm sorry. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. On page three, paragraph C, we talk about the distance between trees and stuff. Shouldn't that, shouldn't we match existing tree placement? We talk about putting it between 30 and 40 feet. But how about on those streets where there are every 25 feet? Should we not match what exists?
Well, let me, let me just explain a little bit. You know, this was, this was trying to suggest a range of spacing that would apply to developers, so that they could actually figure out how much, how many trees they would need to be provided, and what the cost would be for those trees. Recognizing that within the, the public rights of way, there are elements that exist that aren't tree-friendly that they have to work around. So it was meant to give a range. If this range could be between 25 and 40, then their expectation would be, well, I might have to put them 25 feet if the board asks me to. So it would, it would give them the expectations. And I don't think that's, I think that's possible, but it's, I'll listen to what the, the board wants.
I also want to explain, the 30 to, we struck out, this is for street tree plantings. And we really shouldn't be planting small trees in a, in a, in, as a street tree. They, there shouldn't really, when I send, when I say small tree, usually a tree that gets no bigger than 20 feet. Those are not good street trees. So in the future, we're looking for large trees, large spaces, whether it be the, the London Plain, London, to medium trees when there's a small, went for smaller spaces or where there's wires.
Exactly. That's my next point, Michelle. Are those streets where the trees are being replaced under existing wires, they should be small trees.
Well, that's, I think, I think, Jim, though, I want to caution you, right? What Michelle's saying, and this is Michael Sullivan, what Michelle's saying is that in order to permit, you know, clearances for vehicles and for pedestrians and other things like that, the, you need to plant large trees, even if they don't grow that large. You need to have species that can be pruned up and things like that. Where you have wires, if you start planting smaller trees, those lower branches are going to intrude into parking spaces, vehicular cartways, sidewalks, and things like that. And if you start limbing them up, you lose all that biomass, because now you're squeezing it between the wires. So.
Michael, your point's well made.
Okay.
I, I don't disagree with that at all.
Okay, great.
Paragraph 2E, it says that the minimum distance from the curb cut or driveway to the edge of a tree pit is one foot. Is that big enough? Is that, you're putting a tree awful close to a curb cut, and I think you're causing sight distance problems. I think you need to widen that out a bit.
Well, I think, I think that's just, that's just referring to the, the edge of the tree planting bed itself. So the tree would be theoretically in the middle of that. So, and, and, and believe me, I can say this, you know, we've been through enough site plan reviews together, that if there's an engineering or sight distance issue, those things get slid over. So I don't think, I don't think we're going to run into an issue with that.
Again, next page, page four, paragraph three, towards the bottom about, I say, my same comment, where the zoning officer and the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, whether that should be the Shade Tree Commission. Paragraph four.
That was.
I'm sorry?
That, that was something that was there that we didn't touch before.
Okay. And maybe it was written before the, the statute dealing with the environmental commission. But anyway, look into it, please.
Yes.
Okay. Paragraph four, we're talking about the mentions of 2 and 1/2 to 3-inch. I think that ought to be DBH. DBH is the diameter of breast height, and unless you want to put in smaller trees than that.
So, Jim, so Jim, let me, let me just explain, and, and I, and because we're referencing the standards for nursery stock, we don't really need to get into it too much. But I want to, I want to clarify the difference between caliper and DBH. Caliper is measured at 6 inches above the, the root flare for nursery stock. And that's, unless it's 6 inches or greater, then it's measured a foot. DBH is measured as diameter breast height for everybody listening. Diameter breast height is a, is a forestry measurement. So if you, if, it's not used for nursery stock. It's a different standard. It's used, if you were actually going out and surveying trees in a forest, you would use DBH to measure those trees. And you'd have a tape and everything like that. So there are two different standards, and the correct standard for nursery stock would be the caliper dimension.
Okay. You want, you want to make it, the caliper at 6 inches to a foot? Is that, is that what you're basically saying?
No. What, what I'm saying is that if the caliper is less than 6 inches, or less than 6 inches, you measure it 6 inches above the root flare. If it's more than 6 inches, you would measure, because the root would start flaring in a large way. So you would measure that at 12 inches. What I'm saying, and what we've said in the ordinance, is that we think a dimension of 2 and 1/2 to 3 inches represents the right balance between a tree that would resist vandalism and structural damage, and that one which would survive, based on the planting methods that we see.
Okay. Fair enough. Paragraph 5A1. In the last line, you're talking about vegetative ground cover. Do you really want to put that in the area between the sidewalk and the curb?
Well, vegetative ground cover could be grass. So if, if there's space there, it could be grass.
Okay. Yeah. But it could also be something else. It could also be perennials, annuals, rose bushes. And if you try to get out of a car in that area, and you got a rose bush.
Rose bush is not ground cover.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the idea that it's ground cover, you know, is saying this is like something that doesn't get above 6 inches. And I think that, you know, practically, when we go through the site plan, if, if somebody showed some sort of weird vegetation, you know, that would interrupt pedestrian flow, we would catch it. So I, I think the point is that we want to give the option of, you know, beyond mulch, they should have something vegetative.
And not rocks.
And, and, and sometimes there's, there are, there are vegetation, there's herbaceous vegetation that's persistent and perennial, that takes very little water, that might do well there. I don't want to, I wouldn't want to limit it, because I think that there's some landscape architects who come to your city to practice, and they have good ideas. So let's see what those are, and we'll just be vigilant. Good point, though.
And drop down to paragraph five. And the middle line says, you want to use, you want to use topsoil from an area that's never been stripped? You may wait for a long, long time.
I know. We're very idealistic.
I don't think that's practical.
Yeah. You know what? It's, it's something that, it's sort of a, it's an aspirational standard. And I think that if we are going to have an issue with enforcing that, I think that you're right. We probably should dial that back a little bit. I would suggest that we can take that out.
So, take one out specifically?
So, so specifically, Barbara, what we would, what, here's my suggestion. Jim, you tell me if this fits your bill here, that we would say topsoil must be free from subsoil, and then just cross out the rest of that sentence.
Yeah.
Because, because the practical reality is that most topsoil is manufactured now.
And, you know, I think the biggest problem is when you get subsoil mixed with the topsoil. That's where you have your biggest.
Right. Right.
Where it says free from subsoil, maybe you put that in caps.
Okay.
Okay. So we're just going to strike obtained from an area which has never been stripped.
This is Mike Mandel. I only have one more suggestion, and that was on page four, number 5A4, in areas with heavy foot traffic. Do we want to include as an option an ADA compliant tree pit grate? Or is that something that we don't want to see in the city?
No. With, the, the thing, I mean, there is a section that does talk about.
Yes.
But the, the goal is to do, rather than a grate, the paver, so when the tree grows, it's not strangled by the, by the grate. You can remove the pave, each section of paver as the, the tree gets bigger.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else regarding landscaping?
Yeah, I have one more comment. On page five, D2, you talk about a root ball five times, I'm, I'm sorry, a planting pit five times the size of a root ball? I think that is, that's pretty huge.
Yeah, maybe.
If you can get one twice as big.
We could do, we could do, you know, 2X on that, two times. Do you think that, if that works for you, we can make that two times?
That makes sense. I would say, I mean, ideally, it'd be a little bigger than that to Jen Souter, but 5 is huge, but.
So, so are we looking at 3, Jen?
Yeah, I would rather see 3.
Yeah. I think it should be as long as practical, but it has to be practical.
Just so, just so, just so we're clear on this, what we're talking about is, and this is a, these are for paved areas. So there's an, there's an assumption that these are going to be covered with impervious surface. So the, I think, let's, I would go back and, and if you still agree that you want to make it smaller. But this is to anticipate a prepared soil area, planting area, that is going to be below paver. So we're trying to create a much larger area, recognizing that it's going to be paved over. So I want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
So we should keep it at the 5?
That's, that's why we have it so large, is because we're assuming that you're not in a, you know, that you have the room to do that, because you're going to be paving over it.
Okay. Jen?
I was thinking of the, the area between sidewalk and curb.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what we're talking about here.
Okay. Jen?
Yes, no, the bigger is, I'm happy with that, keeping it.
So you're, so you're okay with the 5?
Correct.
Okay.
I have one.
This is the last, I have a couple of questions. But Jen, were you done?
Uh, no, I said one, one question.
Go ahead.
Item three, the tree species. I know, I remember discussing the fact that we were not going to reference a specific list of suggested or recommended species. But for some reason, I thought we were putting something about, you know, an effort towards native and adapted species. But maybe I'm thinking of something else.
We can add, we can add, I'm just looking for the right place to add it.
Right, because this is the tree section.
Yep. So.
We did talk about that for landscaping.
Right. Native and adapted, we should add that to number three.
Number three of tree species?
Thank you. That's all for me.
There's a, you know, preference would be for native and adapted.
Okay, adapted. Because that puts, that lets us do the London Plain.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that exclude the London Plain?
No.
No.
What, what, what I might suggest is that it's an either/or, right? It's native and adapted species are preferred, or matching those in the predominant area. Because that would allow things like the London Plain.
Right. Now, I think that works too. I think it works fine that way.
Oh, great. All right. I think Alexis has been patiently waiting.
Well, yeah. My question about that section three, actually, while we're on it, instead of me going through page by page, is when it says, tree species may vary depending on the overall effect desired, desired by whom?
By the board.
Ultimately, the, ultimately, either board would be the, the board that would decide.
Okay. Just because I do think that, so the species that we find in our city now are actually so defining of kind of the historic streets and lines. And, you know, London Plain is found in some areas in particular, other trees are found in other areas. I just, I worry that we're not giving enough strength to the actual defining the character that we desire on those streetscapes. And, and maybe this is something that goes back to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, that there needs to be some kind of street tree master plan. But just overall, street trees are so critical to the historic master plan of Asbury Park. They're kind of one of the most defining characteristics of the streetscape. So I just worry we're leaving it a little bit too open. But maybe that's subject to another map, you know, a, a street tree plan or something.
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I, I agree with everything you're saying. It's just a, there's not enough intelligence to, behind this document at this point to actually regulate that.
Right. 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 Okay, well, just as long as we acknowledge that, I think if we are being, um, aspirational, I mean, having a street tree master plan would make a lot of sense because it's less even about having a single species or the same species. It's really about the character that kind of historically has defined the streetscape.
Mm hmm.
Um, so my other question, I'll just go back to page two, A, um, removal of street trees, uh, may be permitted with the approval of the zoning officer. Does that include, uh, utilities?
Well, we would, so, we would hope. Clearly, we've had in the city instances of where the utilities, you know, just go forward and trim, even though they're supposed to consult with us ahead of time.
I would say that probably it's one of just the number one major complaints, um, that I hear is, um, I, I don't know if the utilities are going with a low bidder, but the idea that they actually have an arborist that's doing that cutting is like comical. Um, so they basically just come through and remove or chop trees. Like they're, they're, I, I agree, this is about regulating utilities, but that's a real problem. Um, and I'm sure, I'm sure the mayor and everyone else hears those complaints. Um, anyway, uh, moving on, I did have a question about page five, and I think this is what Jim Henry was speaking to, all those kind of construction specs at the top of the page. Is that the stuff that you were going to take out?
No.
Okay.
No, those are, those are, we're hoping that, you know, this is, this is going to be able to be used.
Is this for, is this for kind of large developers and new construction, right?
And well, it's for, we're, um, all site size developers. Meaning both for planning board and for zoning board.
For site plan applications?
It's for all applications. Anyone planting a tree in the, um, between the curb and the sidewalk.
Okay.
I just would like, for instance, would you hold like the Environmental Shade Tree Commission to this soil textural analysis?
No, I mean, that clearly is, no, we, we wouldn't hold them to that. That's clearly for larger scale development.
Is it though? Clearly for?
Well, I say it like that, we, we, we don't want to be, we don't want to be onerous. If, if someone wants to plant a tree outside their house, we don't want to be onerous.
I just worry that this type of spec, which is kind of like for a developer or construction spec, which maybe you could hold a contractor to, like, this also would hopefully a layman who is planning, would be able to go through this and kind of comply with the zoning regulations. And this just seems like a soil textural analysis adds a ton.
But I guess the point is a layperson, you know, like a, a, someone who owned a single family home, they're not going to put in a site plan application to plant a tree.
Okay.
Single family homes are exempt from site plan.
There you go.
Good. All right. Um, I think those are my other questions.
They're exempt as well.
Multi-family?
No. One and two.
There's a statute that says one and two family homes are exempt from site plan.
Yeah, multi-family is not.
Okay, thank you. That answers all my questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Uh, regarding landscaping?
John's talking.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yeah, couple, uh, page three, C one, I, I agree with Jim, Alexis and Eric, like, the, the trees should be matching those in the area. I mean, it would be like, you have all these, like, eight trees in a row and somebody just goes and plants a Christmas tree. I mean, I don't know. So I'm just going to say that. Uh, and I kind of agree with Jim as far as matching the distance. Uh, two E, I agree with Jim. I, I don't know if a foot is enough because, okay, site distance may be enough, but God bless the drunk that comes around the corner and takes out a tree because, okay, it's one foot and the pits are five feet. So the tree in the middle is three and a half feet away from the curb. Got, I'm not sure if one foot's enough. I'll leave that open for discussion. Uh, F. Uh, site distance as determined by the city. Who is the city?
Depends on the entity. It's either the board or it's the zoning officer. Depending if it comes into the board or it's, it's an, it, it's an application that doesn't go to a board.
Okay, then G would be the same answer, approving authority. Who's that?
Board of Adjustment or the planning board.
Okay. We go to page four and we go down to, uh, five, three and four. Somebody give me the definition of a low foot traffic area and a heavy foot traffic area and somebody show me the map. What is my house?
You're low. You're clearly.
Why?
Because you're a low density residential neighborhood.
How about all the kids walking to school?
You're still low. You're not like, you're not like, um, Cookman Avenue or Main Street.
But this is residential areas. I'm not talking about CBD. I'm not talking about Main Street. It says residential areas. I'm talking about residential areas. Is there a map saying what residential areas are low and what residences are heavy?
No, there's no map.
Okay, but then, then what is the definition? How's that going to be decided?
So what if we said residential zoning districts?
Yeah, you know, uh, Mike, I think that's a, that's, that's probably, if I've been thinking about it, if you did say the residential district, it probably would reflect the lower foot traffic. Because you're not talking about mixed use districts or res, or redevelopment areas.
Right.
Okay.
But does that, does that work, Mayor?
I don't know. You guys are the professionals. You guys tell me what works. It's just because, again, I, I, when I read it, I'm like, who's going to make the decision? Like, okay, I'm up on the top of fourth and I don't have that many kids walk into school, but Comstock, everybody from the west side, east side, everything uses Comstock, that probably gets more foot traffic than, that's residential. That probably gets more foot traffic every day than, uh, Main Street or Cookman Avenue combined. So I, I don't know. You guys threw it in there and I'm just asking the questions. But I mean, Comstock definitely gets more foot traffic with children going to school than Cookman or Main Street every day.
Well, I.
So my question.
Yeah, and I, your point, I think it's also, I, I think it's also aesthetics, right? So in commercial districts, you would want to have some, some kind of surface treatment over the tree area, but that wouldn't really look aesthetic. It wouldn't fit with the aesthetic of a residential neighborhood. So I think if you just change it to residential zoning districts, um, area open and then commercial zoning districts or, you know, whatever, all other zoning.
I would just say all, I think all other areas. And, 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 and this is the standard. And if somebody comes in and they're in a residential area and they say, well, you know, I've got this heavy foot traffic, I want to do more, the board can say yes. And, and similarly, in a non-residential area or, or another zone that we don't include, um, they could waive that requirement if, if it doesn't seem like it, it needs that level of pavement. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else have any questions about landscaping?
Barbara, Barbara, before we, before we go, I just wanted to pick up on the, on the one thing that was mentioned that we didn't really talk about how we would alter the ordinance. And if everybody, I just want to see if there's consensus about the spacing of existing tree, street tree patterns. It seemed to be that there was a consensus that new development should match existing street tree patterns, correct?
I, I think so, yes.
Okay, so, so what, what, I think the way we're going to modify it is that we would add a sentence that says, under, uh, design C one, where established patterns of street trees exist, the spacing of new trees shall match the spacing of the existing trees.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Would it be spacing and the same similar trees to be planted?
Well, we could say spacing and form.
Okay.
Because the, one of, one of, one of the issues we have is that, you know, the, the, the market and the nursery trade, uh, continually evolves and sometimes you cannot get those old species anymore. Like I think a lot of the things that people call London plain trees are sycamore trees, Asbury Park. Um, but, um, so anyway, we'll leave that, but we'll say form and size or something like that.
All right, anyone else, uh, on the landscaping? If not, then I would like to propose a five minute, uh, break. Uh, can I get a motion?
I'll second your motion.
I, I'll, 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 I'll first the motion.
Yeah, there you go.
Eyes have it.
All right, five minutes.
Thanks.
Well, pleasant, present and accounted for here?
I think so. You want me to call a roll?
I think we should.
Okay.
Oh, wait, is Michael here? Hang on, Michael Sullivan? There he is. Okay.
Okay. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Uh, Erica Lebo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krezak?
Here.
All accounted for.
All right, uh, do we all want to say what time, uh, what time we're starting up again?
It's.
It is at nine eleven.
Nine eleven. All right, Michelle.
Okay, so the last part of my part one, which isn't a design standard, it's signs. Now, signs are getting a complete overhaul so that we're in compliance with the Supreme Court case Reed versus Town of Gilbert. This is, of course, a landmark Supreme Court case that changed how signs are regulated throughout the United States. In a nutshell, the case basically said that, um, a sign is a sign is a sign. All speech is the same, whether it be commercial, um, personal or political, and that you can't regulate based on whether it's commercial, um, you have to have the same regulation for all types of, of signage because signage is speech, meaning that one size fits all for all, all types of speech. So with that in mind, uh, we completely rewrote the whole sign ordinance. And you have in front of you here the, um, new definitions that will be part of the general definitions of the zoning ordinance. We just separated them out here today because these just pertain about signage. And they're much, much more expansive than our previous, um, our previous sign definitions. And it goes into details about different, different types of signage, um, but also definitions for, as you can see, luminance and it, as I had explained under lighting, knit is the way you regulate the intensity and the brightness of digital signage. Um, so in addition to having more detailed definitions, which you can see here, we have banner, billboard, building a wall, sign flashing. Definitely definition for sign height, illuminated, intermittent. But also part of the rewriting of this whole ordinance is that, um, we have regulations for digital signage and brightness, um, for digital and for all signage, but also we, well, we've always prohibited moving signage. The, the revision that you have before you tonight lets there be digital signage without movement. And that's important. In other words, we would let someone like a, a realtor have a digital sign or some, they're, they're, that comes to mind because they're the ones that use it the most nowadays, rather than showing houses for sale in the window and paper, they're digital. So you can have that, but we control the brightness and you can't have it move. It can move every 24 hours. Um, that's a, that's a downtown example. Other examples, which we already highly, highly regulate, uh, fast food tends to use moving digital signage. Um, and again, now we permit them to, you will permit them to use digital where they feel the need rather than, um, temporary signage or, you know, menu boards, but it can't move. And that's, that's important. These are just the strike throughs of the old definitions. But we're replacing the entirety as follows, but I'm going to do my summary, you know, this is the whole ordinance in front of you. Um, we did not change the base regulation that retail signage, wall signage remains at 40 square feet with two per business. Window signs, 20% glass area, that hasn't changed. We, um, sandwich board signs are of course still permitted and they're a very integral part of our downtown, but we define what that is because we've seen some signage in the downtown while it's, um, sidewalk signage, it's not a sandwich board sign and it doesn't, it, it, some of it's like signage on a pylon in the sidewalk. And that's something that we want to avoid. Temporary signage, temporary signage is now permitted. We, we sort of permitted it before, um, but very, very, very tight. You basically can only have temporary signage for a grand opening. Now, it's a little bit more expansive that you can have temporary signage for some other event that may be happening at your retail business. And as before, for prohibited signs, as I said, we're still prohibiting signs with movement. And that's not only the digital, but anything that, really anything that moves, whether it's, um, I'm forgetting how to, the term for it, um, where sometimes there's a signage with a light on the sidewalk and it moves around, that's prohibited. Billboards and other off-site advertising is still prohibited. And as I stated before, signs in the right of way, other than sandwich board signs, are, um, are now prohibited. We've more so narrowed down on the aesthetics. Sign lighting. The, and we, oh, we still prohibit those, um, type of signs that sometimes people stick in cracks in the sidewalk in the right of way. That's still prohibited. Um, side lighting, it shall not exceed point one foot candles. And actually, what we're striking, like in the other section, is that signs be turned off between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We'll strike it out of this section as well. Um, the lighting for digital signage, we have regulations for residential and non-residential. Nighttime for digital will not exceed 50 nits. Daytime shall not exceed 3,000 nits, non-residential digital signage shall not exceed 150 nits and daytime sign luminance shall not exceed 3,000 nits. Now, you may be asking, why even have digital signage for residential? But we don't anticipate that, but under the Supreme Court case, we kind, again, it's a sign is a sign is a sign, that we have to, you can't differentiate on the books, one standard for commercial, one for residential. It has to be the, well, we could do lighting, but meaning we can't say residential, you don't get digital signs. It has to be a one size fits all. So that was a very, very, I guess that was a quick synopsis of the sign section. Um, but I think, I think I hit all the key points. Also, I just want to state, while a lot of our base regs, like I said, stay the same. The 40 square feet, 20% window signage, we, we just put more meat into the ordinance. So I think that's. So I think that it's clearer and it's less ambiguous.
Does anybody, anyone from the board have any questions that they would like to bring up?
Yeah, Jim Henry, I've got a couple of questions here. On page 1, under the heading "Sign," the last line, can you tell me what you're referring to here? Cemetery markers, machinery or equipment signs, memorial signs or tablets? What do you have in mind here? Page 1.
Yeah, I'm getting there. What does it say prior to that so we can see?
It says in the middle of the page where it says "sign."
Okay.
It's between knit and sign animated?
The general definition of sign.
Yeah. What's the last sentence mean? What does machinery or equipment sign, memorial sign, tablets? What are you referring to?
We're referring, what we're trying to do is distinguish between those things that are not, do not constitute a sign. And that includes, when we talk about machinery or equipment signs, it's really involved with the construction or, you know, or memorial signs, which would be a memorial, like a memoriam, you know, like a cemetery marker. But it's temporary, so.
Okay, okay.
We don't want people to...
On that same page?
A sign permit for a cemetery marker.
If I may, Jim? In that section, if you exempt markers, or excuse me, machinery or equipment signs, a lot of times, people will get cute and they'll take a 10- or 15-foot box truck and park it in their parking lot and put signage on it and talk about sales going on. Would that be excluded or would that be included within the regulations?
That's not the intent of that. That comes up, I believe, that does...
There's a section about automotive signs.
Okay, that's fine, as long as you got it covered so that nobody does that because they are really ugly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, still on page 1. Where it says "sign area"?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Next to the last line. You left out a word there. Supports that are not part of the sign face. Should be, I think, supports that are?
Yes, thanks, Jim.
Okay. Let's go to page 9. In our lettered numbers paragraphs, the second K should be an N. And tell me what paragraph P means.
Hey Jim, I'm still catching up. What page?
9.
Page 9.
What does paragraph P refer to?
Yeah, I don't understand what it means.
It means that the ordinance is not going to, the ordinance is not going to stand in the... The ordinance is not going to stand in the way. So paragraph P?
P, like in Peter.
I understand. It's basically saying that this does not apply for, it allows for traffic control devices and vehicular control devices. It's not the intent to inhibit that. It's intended to stand aside when it comes to public health and safety signage related to transportation.
Okay, just trying to figure out what it meant. If you look at the new alphabetical listing in the paragraphs, we have K, L, M, K. That second K should be an N.
Yep.
Okay. Page 11. Paragraph R. How about courtesy cars? Do they fit in?
I'm sorry, say that again, Jim?
Page 11, paragraph R.
What was the question?
How about if you get a loaner from your dealership a courtesy car with advertising on it and stuff? Exempt, I assume?
Yeah, that's, the point of R is not to go after that. It's more of what, it's more of what Jack said.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's to avoid somebody parking a truck and having a billboard on it.
Okay. Paragraph, page 19. At the end. Okay. The last paragraph here where it says the combined length of construction signs and real estate signs, are they still limited to 40 square feet?
Yeah.
It says 25% of the length of the fence, but it doesn't say how big that sign could be. It could be pretty huge if it's a, just say, for example, it's a 200-foot lot. That's a 50-foot-long fence.
Right now, you may have noticed or not noticed, some of the developers have their whole construction fence as a sign. Like the waterfront developer. And this board has approved that. Because when they come in for development, they usually also need to come in with their construction trailer and their construction signage. And, you know, the board has approved 100% signage for construction fences. So I really, I didn't think, really didn't think the 25% was that bad.
All I'm asking, Michelle, is a sign, the full size of the fence, is it limited to a square footage or...
It's linear.
I'm not arguing with that, I just want to know what you have in mind.
Like a bat, like a wrap. Like, it's linear, 25% is linear.
Yeah, okay. How deep is it, the height of the fence?
It can be if it doesn't exceed the 25%.
25% of the length?
Right. Eight feet from greater top of fence, whichever is lower.
I think it should be clarified. I don't know what you had in mind, but it should be clarified.
I mean, the maximum height is eight feet.
Jim, I think that it's clarified right there, Michelle. If you go up a little bit.
Right, in the chart.
Yeah, in the actual chart, I think it's clarified a bit more than it is down there. The bottom, I think it is. Like, keep going.
Right, real estate signs for minor or major developments, round pole or wall-mounted.
No, I was looking at construction signs, there, right there. I think that that defines it better than this does.
Right, that's a footnote about calculating.
Yeah. That make sense, Jim?
Yeah, I didn't think the eighth would apply to this question, but I don't have an objection. I don't have an objection to it, I just wanted clarifies, so I know what we're requiring.
Right, because they had an asterisk that applies to that. Yes, so I think we're okay there, Michelle.
Okay.
Page 21. Paragraph L2.
Yes.
It seems to me that when you talk about the sandwich board, suppose when they have their October sales out on the sidewalk, sandwich boards are not permitted?
No, they are. What that line is stating is just not every commercial business gets to have a sandwich board. It has to be retail sales, retail service, or restaurant.
And a bar's included in a restaurant?
Of course, bars are included, art galleries are included. Trying to think of an example of who would be excluded, that's a good example. Who would not need a sandwich board sign?
When I read it...
Maybe real estate?
I had a question, it didn't seem right, that's all.
Okay.
And on L4, I think it should read that the sandwich board sign, one sandwich board sign per business.
Well, that is, I think, yeah, board discussion. Because the idea was to try to limit the number of sandwich board signs that are cluttering the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a provision for blade signs?
Yes.
Where's that?
First of all, I think we're not calling a blade sign a blade sign anymore. Michael Sullivan, what do we call them now?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because blade signs terminology got replaced with another terminology.
It's an attached sign.
I have to zoom up to definitions.
It's a nameplate sign? It's a nameplate sign.
Okay.
Two square feet.
I don't think that's, no, that's not a blade sign. A blade sign is a perpendicular sign.
Right, that projects from the face of the building.
Yeah, I know what a blade sign is, but I don't think that that distinguishes it from, I think you could consider that a blade sign. But I understand your question.
Because it kind of relates to the sandwich boards. Like, the point of a sandwich board is for somebody to see it as they're approaching from either direction. And while that may be more informational in character, I do think that blade signs certainly have a place within the signage regulations, especially in a downtown.
I completely agree. Like, we were definitely looking to keep blade signs because this was a discussion.
Could it be your definition under double face?
Yeah.
Well, I think, here's, you know, I don't think that the nameplate sign, I mean, you could, if there's confusion about it, we should make it clear. Right? I don't think there's anything, because a nameplate sign could be oriented perpendicular. The important thing, but the difference that separates that from what might be a blade sign is that a blade sign may project into the right-of-way. That's the issue, I think, that distinguishes it, other than area.
No, we definitely, in the committee, we talked about this. Because when we, Eric, same thing you said, I said, I'm like, hey, where's the blade sign? And I know that we permitted it because I agree, that's essential to the, you know, to Asbury Park commercial architecture. And it is in here, it is permitted.
Well, I would also think that, and the reason I ask is about two square feet, seems very small for a typical blade sign.
What about the double-face sign, is that?
It could be that, but it doesn't, typically, it's defined as something that projects from a building face.
Right.
It could either project from a building face or it could hang below a projected roof.
And maybe we should add blade sign as a distinct definition since we all seem to have difficulty determining which one of these definitions applies. So that when someone is wanting to put up a sign, they look at blade sign and they see it right off.
I agree with that, we should define it and allow it. So, there's a couple of points here. So, A, it will be permitted, we'll define what a blade sign is.
I think we probably need to define the maximum size of a blade sign.
Right.
So you think two feet is too small?
I think it's way too small, I think, you know. But it might also be related to the size of the frontage.
Yeah, I agree, maybe some relation to the street frontage of the building or the...
No.
Or the, or the area of the facade.
Right.
No.
The side of the building that the sign is going to be on.
No, I want to interject and say that doesn't work. I believe what we have now in the ordinance works because...
We can't find it.
Well, I was going to say, because I don't have the strike-through, right? Because this one was a rewrite, except for the definitions, I don't have the strike-through in front of me. Because we used, that is the standard that we use for Cookman. And there was some new blade signage on Cookman, and I think it works.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think blade signs are critical.
No, but the dimensions, I think, really have worked for Cookman. They fit the scale of the street and the scale of storefront. Because I don't think it should be dictated by the size of your storefront because the storefront is usually linear. So it doesn't make any sense, like, the longer your storefront, the bigger the sign.
No, maybe you could have more than one sign. Or the distance that it could project from the face of the building could be regulated by the total width of the sidewalk. Or, you know, up to a certain point. Like, it shouldn't be able to project six feet if the sidewalk is only six feet.
So would you, so let's back up, let's forget about the area. So let's talk about what this means in terms of projection. There are two elements of the projection. There's a relationship to the sidewalk, okay? So if you said 20, it cannot extend more than 25% into an adjacent public sidewalk. You know, maybe that's the right number, right? It's probably close to it, I think, right? So that's it. But the other provision is you have to permit it to actually extend into the public right-of-way as well.
Right.
So there's two aspects of that. So... So you could allow it to project in the right-of-way. And then, I actually think, so if you had an eight-foot sidewalk, then you could go two feet out. Right, theoretically, would that, does that make, I mean, visual, if we can all try to visualize that, is that...
Yeah, but you could have a more vertically-oriented blade sign to give the proper amount of space for a basic logo or...
Yeah, I'm not talking about the area. I just want to get a sense of, first of all, how, you know, how comfortable people are with how it would extend. And it would seem that 25% of a sidewalk width might make sense.
Another question about projection is, do we require it to be a 90-degree angle? Or are blade signs, is a blade sign only to... Or are blade signs, is it, is a blade sign only to, uh, completely flat? I don't know how to say it, like, you could essentially make a triangular shaped blade sign.
No, I, I, that was something we had talked about. That's why there's a definition with double face that-
Okay, good.
But, but the other thing going, I, I don't want to go blindly with a percentage, because what I would like is us to match what's there now, because I'm concerned if we adopt a percentage and not, like, because tonight, and then someone, because this applies, um, to Cookman, that now we're going to have a regulation that's different than what we've had all along, and then maybe it's smaller, maybe it's larger. If I wasn't doing this zoom right now, I would look up that regulation, and I would-
Being that this is, being that the signage regulation is a complete rewrite, you know, this might be one of those things that we have to say, okay, we need to examine blade signs more holistically, um, and not adopt.
But I don't want us then to have a gap, and then, you know, if I, in the interim, someone comes in and, a new, you know, a new business, and says, I want to do a blade sign, and I say, oops, sorry, you can't have a blade sign.
I agree.
Yeah, they say-
But that, that, but, but staying with the existing, it, what is the, is the impetus for us to, to adopt the entire ordinance presently? Uh, related to the passage of the court case? Do we have a, some specific timeline that we have to follow related to that?
No, there's no, there's no, there's no litigation over there, right? You know, this isn't a litigation thing.
Right, right. So that's my point, is this isn't an emergency. We can certainly continue on. It sounds like blade signs is an issue, and it would be nice to see a comprehensive approach to that proposal before we vote on it. If I, if I may.
No, absolutely, because I believe that we have, uh, something, outstanding items on the landscape, as well as, uh, blade signs.
Yeah, and I, and I, I cut Jim Henry off. I apologize, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
You know, well, if you go back to the blade sign issue, uh, what we could do is, uh, list that under the category of signs that are prohibited, and start working on the requirements, uh, and, pass an amendment to, uh, this particular ordinance to, once, once we get the details of what we want in the blade sign, amend this, uh, and, you know, permit it under, with, with certain dimensions and stuff. It's a way of getting around the-
I mean, I am uncomfortable putting it on the prohibited list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, that this, this has to go in the same area as the-
As of right now, it's on the no list.
Right, yeah.
But, but Jim, I think that, that, um, we still have some other items that have to be dealt with on, on landscaping, so let's put this in that bucket of things that we still have to deal with, because we can't pass something that we don't, we haven't finished defining everything, and, and looking into items that the planning board members have brought up. So there aren't many of them. There are a few, and those I think we have to deal with before we go to any kind of, oh.
Okay, fair enough. Let me finish up my comment.
Keep going.
On the rest, on page 22.
Oh, just, just so, just so we're clear, the blade signs are permitted under, on page 22, 30-61.16C.
31.
So, suit for identification wall.
Okay, um, nowhere do we address political campaign signs uh, in the city right of way.
Okay, so, so let me, let me tackle this, Jim. As Michelle said in the preface to this discussion, uh, we do not distinguish between political signs, free expression, commercial, and everything else. There are temporary signs that are permitted, with an area of four square feet each, and up to 24 square feet in total. So, political signs are temp, are a form of temporary signs, uh, and viewpoint signs. In the right of way, all signs not put there by, um, the government, uh, or the DOT, or someone who has authority to do so in a right of way, are prohibited. So they are prohibited.
Um, what, what bothers me, Michael, is that after an election, and it doesn't matter who is running or anything like that, uh, three weeks, a month, six weeks later, those signs are still there, and, uh, it bugs me. Uh, I'd love to see something in an ordinance that says that, uh, one of these signs that's not removed within X number of days after the election, uh, draws a fine of whatever.
That's, that's a different ordinance. That's a police ordinance. Or some other, that's not a zoning ordinance, that's a police ordinance or something.
That's, that's what, that's what my, um, that's my annoyance is. Um, okay, paragraph C on page 22, they're talking about a projection of more than five feet from the wall. That seemed to be a pretty, pretty hefty, uh, projection.
That's this, that's the existing ordinance. It's the same. That has not changed.
Okay. Uh, page 23. Uh, what's the definite, uh, paragraph three, top of the page? What's the definition of window vinyl?
Uh, I think, I think, as my, as my, my memory serves me, that was an applied, even something that's like a, uh, a vinyl applique or a window. You know, it's when they sticker, a sticker on a window, basically.
Okay, I, that was from my identification. I just didn't understand what it was.
I think that's a-
And then my last comment-
Yep.
My last comment is on page 25, uh, violations of penalties. I don't see anything listed here. Is this the proper place to, uh, list the violations of penalties?
As memory serves me, uh, we are not listing any specific penalties or violations, because it's going to be handled in a different place in the city's ordinances.
Okay, uh, so that you're going to do something about this at, in a different section of the zoning-
I'll let Michelle speak to, to how this is going to handle.
This is, this is embedded in the zoning, it's, it's the same as any zoning violation, that the penalty is set by the courts. It'll be the same procedure as any zoning violation that the zoning officer has, and it's right to summons, and that, that, you know, that summons is, is, um, handled through the court system, that the judge defines the penalty.
Where, where is that issue addressed? I mean, where, where, where do I go to look to see, if I put up a sign in violation of, uh, rules of regulation, the zoning rules and regulations, where do I go to see what my penalty is?
No, I-
That's my question.
You don't know your penalty. A judge determines it. It's a summons.
Not a criminal matter, Jim. It's more of a zoning violation. So, if the zoning- zoning, no, you don't put, you don't, you do not put penalties in the zoning ordinance. If there's a zoning violation, you won't see penalties in any zoning ordinance, other than that they can move before the courts for injunctions and things like that, but you don't see fee schedules and stuff like that. That goes to, uh, there's general ord, there's general penalties for, uh, violation of general ordinances. So you wouldn't-
Okay.
Yeah, your zoning officer, no different than, um, if somebody puts a fence up that's too big, you know, they put a six-foot fence, it's in the front yard, in violation of zoning ordinance. Zoning officer goes out, warns them, follows the procedure. Once they don't do it, you give them a summons, you take them to municipal court, and judge decides under general, uh, general penalties for violation of municipal zoning ordinance is what the penalty will be for first offense.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
That's the extent of my comments.
Thanks, Jim.
Just before we, we continue, um, did we, uh, resolve the blade sign issue?
I, I would like it to be resolved. I mean, there's a standard in the ordinance. It's the standard that we had before. I feel it works. Examples of that signage is, that ordinance are found on Cookman.
I, I, do I understand, Michelle? I'm wondering, I was wondering if, well, we talked about the identification projecting signs. Did that cover it, or-
That covers it.
Was that it?
That's it. It's in, if we want to, that's it. I mean, it, the thing is, it's no longer called a blade sign, but that is the blade sign, the identification sign, and it, there's a specific regulation put in there.
Okay, would, would we, uh, okay, so, as the board, are we okay with, for those that are concerned about blade signs and, which are identification and projecting signs, are we okay with that definite, with, what it's defined as here?
I'm okay with that.
Well, I think it should be called a blade sign first.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think you're right, Rick, that either we have to, we have to put a definition someplace that says blade sign equals identification projecting sign-
Yes.
And call them both, because there was enough confusion.
I mean, among us, there was confusion, so imagine people, the lay, layperson tried to do it.
Yep.
As permitted in paragraph three of, I think 12 square feet, either side, project more than five feet from the building, from the wall. Um, I would also point out, Michael made a good point, that there's two methods of creating a blade sign, and one is to project it from the face of the building, and another is to hang it from the roof overhang.
With the roof overhang?
Some projected signs were mounted on the facade, just like perpendicular to the building facade.
It, it could also be mounted under the roof overhang.
I don't think we should permit that.
Like it is, uh, the, the example that comes to mind is actually the signs on the boardwalk businesses are hung from the structure above, which is-
The balconies.
Walkway, yeah.
The balconies, yeah.
Right, well, that, that, I'm, I'm fine with that, because that's still the first floor. When you said that, Eric, I instantly thought-
Yeah, you thought six feet up, or six stories up, right, yeah.
So I, um, who's got that situation? No, like, really?
Well, you could have small businesses in former residential buildings on Main Street that have, uh, peaked roofs that might go to the second story.
I mean, I'm fine with, with that adaptation, as long as it stays, uh, below the second story window.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair to say below this, any point below the second, no, below the third story window, but below the third story. Because you want it to be able to go up to the sec, the top of the second-
Right, right, right. Okay.
And, but I guess, you know, this, this sort of brings in another question, another issue that I sort of see that's not accounted for, and that's the kind of, there are many different types of sign architecture that form the streetscape of our city, and some of those are very large, kind of 1950s googy, drive-through signs. There's one on Sunset, near the shops at Sunset Point. There's the form, the sign that's on the French, the former French cleaners on Main Street. There's some examples of that, that I don't think are really covered in this, because they're bigger, but they fit an architectural style. So I'm wondering, is there a mechanism within the text for the board to consider signages either as part of restorations of existing signs, or in styles that might include things that are like neon, or, you know, kind of related to the business that's being, um, created? Or signed for?
I prefer that the board handle that as a variance situation, because-
Okay, that's a perfectly good answer.
Yeah, okay, because I was going to say, the signs that are out there now are grandfathered. Um, and anyone proposing a new sign of that size really needs a good, like, a, a design review scrutiny, that I think variance situation offers.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Well, what, and I guess my, my other question would be about where is neon accounted for? I do think that while we don't want huge neon signs, it is certainly an aesthetic that is widely used to, to good effect for businesses of all ages.
Well, I agree with you. Since I've been in Asbury Park, and now we're on five years, I've yet to get a neon sign application. Everyone wants, you know, what we, we bat away is everyone wants a moving sign. And, but no one has come in with neon.
But neon is seemingly strictly, is prohibited.
No.
Oh, okay.
We had to do a variance for that, uh, the place on, uh, Rebar, I mean, R-Bar on Main Street, because they did a a neon sign.
Oh, they-
Application.
But their issue wasn't that it was neon, their issue was the size and the placement.
No, I think neon was the issue too, because it wasn't permitted.
But that was Main Street, that Main Street has their own sign regs. I'm going to have to look into that, but when I had done my pre-meetings with them, the, the issues were the placement and the size, but that's ma, I'll look at, relook at then the Main Street redevelopment plan.
This is Donna Miller, and yeah, in the Main Street redevelopment plan, it does say, no neon, and that was their problem. They did have, uh, one of the projecting signs was going to have neon lettering. But it is a deviation from the Main Street redevelopment plan regs, not-
Right, we had to give them a variance for it.
Right.
But, um, this, yeah, so,
So-
But that worked out in that they came to the board, but they also, Donna, had issues with size and placement, and-
Yes, they had multiple, multiple deviations, but the, the prohibition on the neon was in redevelopment plan regs, not as part of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So do, do, does the same, or does the, will we have to re, will we be at some point looking at the sign regulations for the Main Street redevelopment? Separate from this, or does it, does it, do we not have to do that as a result of the existing, you know, kind of court case changes?
The, the, I don't believe we have to do the same there, because that pretty much treats the, that, the way that's written treats signage pretty evenly. I mean, we definitely can tweak it next time we open up that plan. The real issues were, you know, we had, or were in the main sign ordinance. Because like Michael's saying, we no longer, can't treat political signage differently now, or we can't-
Right, no, right, so you could end up with a gigantic candidate flashing, um, neon sign if we permit it. Not, well, I know you couldn't be flashing, because it's not allowed, but-
Right, but, but it's just like, yeah, it's the content of the sign, like, can't, commercial language can't be different than political language, so sign is sign is sign, yeah.
Right, I, you know, I guess it just really, it kind of leaves us in this spot where creativity in signage is, you know, an important aspect of a streetscape environment, right? You know, properly executed and properly controlled streetscape environment, and it, if what you're saying is, if we allow neon signage, generally, we have to allow it everywhere, is that-
No, I believe we do not. Donna and Michael-
No, no, no.
It's not prohibited.
It's not, it's not prohibited in this current draft, okay? What's prohibited are flashing signs, you know, intermittently flashing signs, things like that. If someone were to come in with a, a neon sign, it's not prohibited. It's just a type of illuminated- It's just a type of illuminated sign. But this does prohibit, uh, parts of the sign that are not the copy from being illuminated. Like, you can't have trim that's illuminated, and things like that. So if the neon was trimmed, but I think Michelle's point about, if there is a, if there is a non-conformity that somebody, and somebody really wants to pursue something very artful, now, the variance process would allow them to really defend their design, and really give them a rationale to pursue a very coherent, a very coherent, uh, design strategy that would be, that might be acceptable, or might not be. You, you can't, you can't regulate every aspect of design, or you'll get, it's very tough to do that, so. That's my point. But I agree with what you're saying about the, the dynamism of a commercial streetscape and signs.
All right. Does anybody else have any signage?
Yeah, real quick, uh, this is my, uh, page 10, 30 dash 61.3, prohibited signs. I had two quick questions that are probably just more policy decisions, but, um, thought, you know, why not get the board's opinion? Letter K, bus shelter advertising signs, typically, um, you know, that is a way to kind of fund the construction of bus shelters, so, um, I understand that, you know, advertising may want to be limited, but that's something that might actually fund the construction of them, so that's just a question. And then why, um, signs painted on a building? I have seen that a lot in Asbury Park and surrounding communities, and just questioning why that would be prohibited.
I have the same note.
Well, let me, um, start with the second. That's something that has been in this ordinance, and I think it's a throwback from non-professional hand-painted signs, um, that I've seen in, that I, I've seen in other places that I've worked, where someone who's really not a sign manufacturer, just freehandedly paints on the wall. But I do, yes, it is, it is a little, it is restrictive, and I do think it's a throwback when we had more businesses that would have signage like that. So I'm fine with that being struck, or having a caveat if painted professionally.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, to put that, those words in.
I, I, you know, so Michelle, this is Michael, you know, I think that's, that, that opens up a can of worms. I think you either have it, or you don't have it, um, as a prohibition, but you, having it painted professionally, trying to dig into that is tough. So I'm just, I just think that could be problematic if you put that caveat on there.
Can it be maybe just limited to, um, a building name, or a business name? Maybe that would?
No, you know, just either keep it or don't. If you want to strike it, let's strike it.
I would say strike it, but.
Very good.
I, I tend to agree. I do think that signs painted on buildings are standard and historic in some, in some places.
Just what letter was that again?
Y.
Why?
We're gonna strike Y, and how's everyone feel about striking bus shelters?
Strike it.
Uh, what, what number was bus shelters?
K.
Hey.
Okay.
Um, Mike, what would you think about limiting it to 50% of the total area of the bus enclosure?
Oh, I would even say 25%.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Like, I, I don't think that, I agree that we should allow signs on bus shelters, but that whatever the total enclosure surface of the bus shelter is, it's limited to 25% of that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, let's set that language if everyone else is okay with that.
So, so it would remain it as a prohibition, but it's, uh, bus shelter advertising signs that exceed 25% of the surface area of the.
Enclosure.
Of the enclosure.
Yeah.
You want, would you like?
Actually, yeah, 20, uh, wait, let's do some math. Would you, yeah, okay, 25%, nevermind. I don't want.
If it becomes a problem, you can always change the percentage later.
Yes.
Well, you, well, you'll have some time to think about it. So is there, anybody else have any other questions regarding signs?
I do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. That's why we're here.
So, related to signs and the total amount of window surface, um, is, where is that covered?
Um, it was under window signage. Am I going the wrong way?
So, you know, I, I'm thinking about, you know, a business that opens up in a already existing storefront, that is predominantly transparent material.
Mm-hmm.
And then they cover the entire space in either display cases, which is also an egregious thing, or signs. Like cigarettes, and liquor brands, and, um, whatever else you're advertising for.
No, it's definitely in here. Um, and it is, its percentage is limited. I had it in my presentation, that, um.
So what kind, how do we define that?
It's window signage, let's go with the definitions, definitely in the definitions.
Sign, window, any sign mounted in any fashion to the interior or exterior surface of the window, okay. And so that doesn't mean just business advertisement signage, that means any signage, lottery.
Correct, because a sign is a sign is a sign.
Right, so Chase Bank ATM located at this 7-Eleven is a sign.
That's right.
Okay. Um, great. Now, it's limited to the total amount.
Someone help me out to find the window sign area.
I'm looking to.
Oh, it's on page 23.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Window lettering, okay, window lettering, all window lettering and sign shall be located on or fixed in here, it's 20%. Sign area, 20% of the window area. Any painted area of the window shall be construed as window lettering. What is temporary window lettering? So how does this account for, like, holiday window painting? Is that advertisement or decoration?
No, that, that's adverti, it depend, you know, I'll say this, it depends. If it's a, you know, if it's a pumpkin in the window, which is a plain pumpkin, that's a decoration. If it's something painted in the window that's part of lettering, or is a symbol of the business, then that is signage, like.
If it's commercial speech.
Hmm. Oh, but you leave it, you leave a caveat here for 50% as long as it's removed within 30 days. So if somebody were to put, you know, a, a big sign that was kind of Christmas, a temporary sign that was Christmas oriented.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, paint, but painted on the inside of their window, let's say, they would have 30 days.
I mean, it could be paint, it could be lettering.
Yep, okay, understood. Um, and then with relationship to the WRP and other urban renewal areas, they have their own signage guidelines that override these?
So let, let me clarify again, the WRP has all their own regs, does not refer back to the ordinance for anything. Main Street has its own regs, Cookman Avenue is a hybrid, some of the sign regs go back to here, and then it has its own, um, design standards on top of the sign regs. Springwood Avenue refers back to the zoning ordinance. Uh, I think I hit all the commercial ones. Main Street has all their own regs.
Okay. Um, okay, I was just curious.
Barbara, you're muted.
Anybody else have any questions about signage?
Don.
Planning Board members?
Don Moore does.
Go for it, John.
Okay, it's not gonna be quick, so how do you want to go?
Whatever. I mean, if it's not gonna be, go ahead, John.
Okay, on page 10, prohibited signs, billboards, why? Again, we're a city. I have no problem with billboards, and everybody who applies to us is going to go to planning or zoning and be, say yea or nay if it's ugly. I mean, we have them on Memorial, we have them at Asbury, we don't have them in residential. I mean, again, are we trying to be like, deal? I don't know. What's wrong with billboards? Somebody explain it to me.
Well, I could say, we've always had billboards prohibited. Every municipality in New Jersey has prohibitions on billboards. You do not.
Well, maybe that's why we're at Asbury, because we do the, we do the spectacular.
You, but you, you don't, as a policy, want to open the door for billboards. It will.
We already have them.
Yeah, and we, and the thing is, most municipalities believe what they have is enough. Billboards are, are, I mean, there's a lot to be said about billboards and the billboard industry. It is standard practice for a municipality to ban billboards. If you, we, if we have billboards, the door is gonna be wide open, and you're gonna end up with signage that you do not want to see, and you will not be able to stop that train.
Why couldn't they be stopped at zoning or planning?
Because the, because the amount of money the billboard industry has, and the amount of money that they pump, pump into, um, into various things, it's, it's very, it's, it's very difficult. They go to, even if they lose its zoning boards, they appeal them to the state, they go to state Supreme Court, there, it's, it's a lot of money that, that industry has, and that they have to spend, and they won't, they won't stop.
So, so I, I agree with what Michelle is saying in terms of, um, the billboard lobby and their, uh, legal, uh, powers. And if they get a toehold, they, they could certainly make life difficult if you were to deny one. The, the other thing we've been facing, and I'll, and I'll say this just as a generality, is that the billboard industry has realized that if they go to digital signs, they can now, instead of renting to one advertiser, they can rent to multiple advertisers, and it's really, this is where they're getting a lot of their money. But what we've found is that even in places that could have stomached, um, uh, billboards that were not, um, uh, digital, that when the digital billboards come in, that, uh, they, they find them very objectionable, and that because of the changeable nature of them, um, and the brightness, uh, and the color that they do, um, their, most towns find them objectionable. Um, and I think it was that, most towns, once they went to the digital billboards, really geared up to try to, to prohibit them. And your, your existing ordinance does prohibit them, so.
Okay, and maybe that's part of my problem, and I wasn't gonna bring it up because of the time and everything. I think out of the six packages we got, this is the only package, I'm calling it a package, whatever you want to call it, 20-some pages, where it doesn't have what was in originally, and it doesn't have what was added by, what, you know, so, you know, it, it, I didn't know that, so now I know.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But this is the only one of the six where, you know, new is underlying, taken out was deleted, was crossed out, this package doesn't have that. So I didn't know billboards were already banned, so, my bad. Are roof signs already banned?
Yes.
I think that's stupid. I mean, say somebody, like, say the Savoy Theater built a beautiful hotel there, and they wanted to put a roof sign, Savoy on the top, we would say no to it?
No, again, it, that's the kind of thing you want as a variance situation, because you want to, you, you want it limited to, to special buildings, you want these.
Okay, okay, for, for time, you said it would be something that they could apply for and ask for a variant.
Yeah.
Okay. I agree with, I agree with Michael on K. Uh, what's a B T, what's a beacon sign?
Michael, could you address beacon sign?
It, it would be like a, like a, would you have around an airport, or something where you'd have a flashing, uh, light that would, like on top of a lighthouse, or like an, an airport, which would flash and maybe spin or something like that? Just another way of talking about a movable or flashing sign, but it, it describes one that, it's just covering all the bases, but you might see, uh, almost like a police car sign, like an old cherry top.
And you, intermediate sign, I'm gonna, I guess this goes back to my original question, the city's exempt, so the sign in Sunset Avenue Park, which isn't in a park zone, but it's in the Main Street zone, like, that sign there is intermediate, so because we're the city, it's legal, but somebody else couldn't build one?
Correct.
Yeah, there's a presumption that anything the city does is in the public interest, and in the public's welfare, so.
Okay. Hmm. Banners, I had a problem with, except I think it's later on, again, City Hall, they can put up banners for the film festival.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I agreed with, uh, signs painted directly on a building, I think were fantastic, so I'm glad you struck that. Let's go to page, duh, 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 12. Nope, nothing on 12, been answered. Sign permit fees, every person making an initial application for a sign permit shall pay a sign permit fee at the time of the application. And then is there another fee? It says it, it, an initial fee.
No.
Initial application.
Meaning it's $25, meaning $25 per, per application. No, it's $25.
Is that the going rate of other towns? It seems awful cheap to me.
Well, I would like, you know, that's what it is now, and I had, would like at some point to introduce a comprehensive revision to all our fees.
Well, since we said, like, numbers aren't in this, but here's a number that is, if you're in agreement it should go up, why not move it up now?
Because it will be a little askew of our, currently, our zoning permit is 10, sign is 25. So I would prefer that we amend the two together, so they're, they're more even.
But this is in front of us now, and that may not be in front of us for a year, and or six months. So again, everybody seems to think $25 is cheap, it's in front of us now, why not do it now? But again, we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, so you can get back to me on that.
Well, and, and I would say it's not even a planning board recommendation, it's a mayor and council decision. It has nothing to do with zoning, but.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, meaning that you could change it on the council level and not have to send it back to the planning board.
Correct.
Page 16, B2. A bill rendered for the cost of removal shall bear legal interest, charges and collection shall may be made accordingly. I know what it's assuming, but why not add in, because, okay, John Moore broke the law, you sent John Moore a bill and he doesn't pay it, so, I mean, the structure has to be there, and I know a tax lien would be put on John Moore's property, why not put that in there?
Which one are you referring to?
His, um, removal of. His removal of a sign, B2. I think I lost my screen sharing.
No, that's it. You're right, you're right there.
Okay.
Good.
B2, page 16.
Yep.
We're basically saying, the way I read it, a bill will be given to John Moore, and he will pay it. Well, when John Moore doesn't pay it, why don't we just put it in there, and if it's not paid, the lien will be put on the property?
Jack, can I... Can we do that?
If you say that's something the council has to do, the council will do it.
Yeah, you're right. Make sure, I think Fred would want to have some say in that on how to structure that within your regular, within your ordinances, yeah?
Well, how do other towns do it? Sure, we took a bunch of this out of other towns, whatever. It's just, the way it's worked...
We can look into it.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
You're looking into a lot of things now in the next meeting, so that would be one of them.
Okay. Page 17. A6. The temporary signs will not interfere with obstruct the vision or distract motorists, bicyclists, or pedestrians. I know what it means, but just to me, the word distract is a funny word, and maybe not the correct word, because, okay, I'm John Moore, I'm driving down Main Street, and I look at the sign on City Hall saying Film Festival. Well, I was distracted by it.
It'll be rendered void for vagueness. There's no identifiable standard in there as to what the distraction is. How do you calculate? To me, it's a distraction. To you, it's not. How do you put a law into effect that says that? It's got to be a distraction or not a distraction for everyone.
Let's take it out.
Take it out, that's all.
Okay.
Wait, we're talking about A6?
Yeah. So it will just read now, the temporary signs will not interfere with or obstruct the vision of bicycles or pedestrians?
Yeah.
Those are objectives.
Okay, again, there's that one word.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just take care of the last part.
Okay. I'll just answer it. Page 20. Top of the A, street signs, street address signs, for each lot, residence or business, one street sign, address, may be... It's an ordinance, so you're going to say must be?
No.
Must be displayed, why not? It's a city ordinance.
Are you saying that you were requiring them to put a street, a sign on the front of their house?
I believe it's already a standing city ordinance, yeah.
Well, then if it is, you want to make sure it's consistent.
Right, so that's why I say, take out the may, it must be, if I'm correct.
If it's already a city ordinance, then why address it in the zoning ordinance?
I don't know.
Why make it redundant?
This, because this is referring not to... Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, not numbers, but if someone... This also goes like a nameplate. Like, when you see one of those fancy little plate signs with the numbers, like in a historic manner. Now, this isn't like regulating... I could be wrong.
I'm just going by the first three words, street address signs. My street address sign is 1407 Ford.
This is Donna Miller. So, yeah, this is the threshold that lets residences have these types of signs without having to get a permit.
Oh, yeah, these are signs without permits.
But again, okay, maybe I missed it.
Okay.
It says may be displayed.
Right.
My city ordinance must be displayed.
It's permissive, so that they're not penalized. There are other general ordinances. Again, this is strictly dealing with land use for private property. We have the other general ordinances in the city that, yeah, you know, for safety, public welfare issues, you know, the fire and police require you guys to have your address displayed. But when you come in for a sign, you don't need to get a permit to put your address on your house. So this says, yeah, those things are allowed, you don't need a permit, and that way you can comply with the other regulations of the ordinance, and it's not a burden on that residence.
I mean, I get what John is saying, that it's different if you're just putting the number on your house. But that's why it's not so specific here, in my opinion also, is that the number is fine, you must have a number. But over here, you're saying you may have a number and your street name.
No, the point of this section is, it's the header, signs permitted as of right without permits. If you want to put the number on your house, and it doesn't exceed two square feet, you can just go put the number on your house. You don't have to come into our office.
Okay, I understand. I think the whole thing is still the mayor, the must.
The requirement to have your street number displayed is in a different part of the ordinance. It's not in zoning, it's not a zoning requirement. That's a general ordinance requirement under city law, under the police powers.
Okay, I just think they should be consistent. I'll go on. Page 21. Hold on a second. Go to four, duration. Temporary garage yard sale sign may not be displayed for a period longer than three days twice a year. We can have, I can have a garage sale three times a year, so I can only put up the sign twice? Should it be consistent with the mercantile licenses?
Yes, so we'll make that three times a year. That's a typo.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
That's I4.
Page 24, and this is it. Down at the bottom, administrative enforcement, the zoning officer shall be the official, enforcing official. Is it just, which I totally understand, but there ain't enough time in the year for him to enforce all this? Is code enforcement any of this also?
No, because it's in the zoning ordinance, it is the zoning officer. Only the zoning officer, you know, is the regulatory entity.
By statute.
Yeah.
By statute.
Okay.
I mean, we've had code enforcement help us out when we're short-staffed. So, we love that.
Okay, that's good. That's all I got, thank you.
Anybody else? Anything else from anyone else on the planning board regarding signage? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, all right, so as we can see, we still have there are a number of modifications that have to be made to these, to what we reviewed today. So we're going to have to carry this to another meeting. My question's going to be to Michael, Michelle, Donna. Our next available meeting is on November 2nd. Will that be enough time for you to do that work? I know Yvonne, I see your hand, Yvonne.
I just want to point out that November 2nd is election eve. That may be, may not be the best day to have this.
Okay. I get that. That probably may not be for many people. December 7th is the next available date for the planning board to hear this. Is that, how about, does that work for you, Michael, Donna, and Michelle?
It works. I was going to say, would we do it that we would first go over the changes, and then jump into part two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We go over the modifications, go into the next one, and into the next one.
Yeah, and with the public participation after each one, correct?
Yes. Okay, so December 7th?
Michelle, if I may, excuse me, Barbara. No issues with mayor and council in terms of time?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need... Do you have, Michelle and Michael and Donna, do you have everything you need regarding, you know, all the notes that everyone made on modifications?
I think we do. I mean, I believe that we'll be able to compare notes with Michelle, and I think we can, you know... I think we can, I have everything I think I need, I just want Michelle to have her eyes on it.
Yeah, I took notes. Took some notes, so...
I took some notes also, but, you know, I trust you guys, obviously. So we'll need to get a motion to carry this to December 7th with no further notice?
Before we do that procedurally, are we, I mean, we are largely complete with part one, are we not?
With modifications that still have to be made, yes.
Right. Should we, out of fairness, allow any members of the public who have been listening all night to ask a question?
I was going to say the same thing, because if we make changes, and then, this is Jen Sauter, if those revisions are made, and then
I know the hour is late, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Want to open this up to cross-examination? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that the board may want...
That's what has to come next. For cross-examination before public comment.
Right, I understand. I just, I'm throwing it out there for the board to consider, that's all.
Board members?
I mean, I think it's a valid...
I agree.
Point that if, yeah, you end up making a couple rounds of revisions if we don't.
Are you going to also open it up to public comment after the cross-examination?
No, the public comment comes at the end, at the very end.
Why can't we just wait till we go through all of it and then have cross-examination at the end? Why do we have to do it in sections?
You're going to wind up doing it twice. Because when the new information comes in...
Well, I mean, don't do any new information. I mean, wait till we complete all the sections.
What I'm saying, I think you're correct. But if you do it, you're going to wind up doing a cross-examination twice. And people, you may, when you come in with these new amendments, there may be people that are going to want to ask questions about those new amendments.
Right, but if we don't make any changes from what was discussed tonight, I mean, what we've been given is what we're considering, and we just finish off the rest of the sections before there's any cross-examination.
No, the cross-examination comes on the section. You're taking it, the way I understand it, you're taking it in three separate sections. You're going to have direct testimony, modifications and so on, then cross-examination of Michelle, and whoever else testified, and then...
What I'm saying is, we haven't gone through, we haven't gone through all the documentation yet.
I agree.
So why can't we wait until we've gone through all of it, and then the public has their opportunity to cross-examine?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, why do we have to do it now, as we've only gone through part of the documentation? Let's complete all the documentation, and then...
We decided to break it up into three parts based on the resolutions that were referred to the planning board. So part one is done, we've completed that testimony.
No, you haven't.
No, we had to go through all of it.
She's got to be re sworn, she's got to give testimony, and she may not have it right. You don't know that yet.
But wouldn't that cross-examine be only on the new testimony?
Yes, unless there's additional points brought up by board members.
I'm just saying that there's probably members of the public who've been listening for three hours and wanted to get it worded, but...
Isn't that what occurs at all applications when we reach 10:00 or 10:30 at night? That the public, if we can't, they haven't been heard, we always carry it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't think we should continue.
I get that. I understand that people have been sitting. But this is not, this isn't a quick process. This is, how long has this committee been working on this thing?
Understood. Motion to carry, December 7th.
Second. Okay, roll call. We've got a motion and a second. Let's see here. Eric Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor? I couldn't hear her.
Oh, she's muted.
Let's get back to her. I'll go around it, okay. Eric Alippo?
Yes.
Sorry, I said yes.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. Eric Alippo?
Yes.
With Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Krzak?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, matters adjourned till December 7th, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
May I get, just one thing that I would like to say, if I may. I just wanted to really thank everyone that participated in putting this together. This has been 18 months' worth of work, that this subcommittee has worked on this, and have finally come to a point where we could actually present it to the planning board and to the public. And I wanted to also thank the planning board members for their extremely detailed input. It's phenomenal. I'm so happy that so many of you have gone through this and taken the time. This was not easy for any of us. And we're not nearly done, but, you know, it's a big thank you.
Before we go, Barbara, if I could, given that we're two months away from our next meeting, if there are sections of this ordinances, everybody's got all the drafts, and you have questions, and you want to send them to me, or you want to pick up the phone, and you want to say, hey, what does this mean, or what is this? Anything that we can do to really get your understanding of things you might not understand, or rationale, or if there's a mistake that we made, don't hesitate, don't wait for the next meeting, because that'll help us be more efficient, I think, as we move forward, so... Just throwing that out there.
Is that all for free?
Whatever you want it to be.
But please do... I wanted it to be free, but I'm...
Okay, it's free.
If you're going to charge me, I'm not going to call.
You heard it, it's recorded. Michael said it's free.
Michael, I don't know why they always want us to work a billable hour for $0.
But listen, listen. I just want to be helpful.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Moved, Mike.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, the ayes have it.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.